Okay, sorry about that.
Okay, that's all right. Okay, I'm calling to order the Monday, September 21st, 2020 zoning board of adjustment meetings. And Tim, before we go into the review of meeting procedures, I'll just go ahead and do a roll call of the board. Mr. Patterson?
I am present.
Mr. McDonough?
Hi, I am present and alone.
Mr. Newlove?
I am present and I am alone.
Mr. Nash?
Present and alone.
Mr. Katz?
Present and alone.
And I'm Vice Chair Mercer, and I'm also alone in my office. Okay, thank you for all of that. So, Mr. Corwin, would you like to review the procedures?
Thank you. This is Tim Corwin with the Planning Department. Due to the coronavirus pandemic and pursuant to Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 issued on March 23rd, 2020, in accordance with Executive Order 2020-04, the zoning board is authorized to meet electronically without a quorum physically present in the same location. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting. However, in accordance with emergency order number 12, the city has taken action to provide public access to the meeting by telephone with potential additional access by video to provide public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting and to provide a mechanism for the public to alert the zoning board during the meeting if there are problems with access. For this meeting, Microsoft Teams is being used as the communication platform. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and to participate in the meeting by visiting LebanonNH.gov/live and clicking on the link for the September 21st, 2020 zoning board meeting. Instructions on how to attend are provided on the webpage. To assist in the preparation of the meeting minutes and to ensure all participants are aware of who is participating, all speakers are asked to identify themselves and to spell their first and last names before beginning to speak. Likewise, we ask all board members to please identify yourself before speaking. In order to ensure the best possible transmission of the meeting content, it is suggested that if you are anyone other than a board member, that you please disable the camera on your chosen device to reduce the video feed and to increase the available bandwidth for all attendees, at least until such time as you participate in a hearing. To improve sound quality and reduce, sorry, to reduce, sorry, to improve sound quality and reduce the amount of feedback in the system, microphones will be muted by staff until you have a question or comment. For people using the Microsoft Teams platform, you can unmute yourself by clicking the microphone icon that appears on the Teams platform if you hover your cursor on the lower middle, the lower middle half of your screen. For people calling in by phone, please press star six to unmute yourself. If anyone has difficulty with access during the course of the meeting, you can email me at Corwin, C-O-R-W-I-N, at LebanonNH.gov, or you can try using the chat function on Microsoft Teams to indicate the issue that you're having. If I can provide technical assistance, I will try to do so. If not, it is still worthwhile to be aware of problems that participants may be encountering so that we can try and address those for future meetings. In the event that we experience widespread and severe technical difficulties such that we are unable to continue holding the meeting, we will adjourn and reschedule. Please note that the public hearings listed under Agenda Item 4A, for A, B, and C, will be continued to the October 5th zoning board meeting in order to allow for additional public testimony in the event that an interested person is unable to access the meeting. Other items may be continued as well, but those items under Agenda Item 4 for certain will be continued until October 5th. For anyone who would like to provide testimony on those agenda items but could not as a result of technical difficulties in accessing this evening's meeting, please send your questions or comments on that proposal, on the proposal that you're interested in, by email to planning@lebanonnh.gov. For additional information, please call the Planning and Development Department at All votes that are taken during the meeting tonight shall be done by roll call vote. Please note there may be a delay between the time that something is said and when you hear it at home, please be patient as we try and manage that delay. We ask that you not use the Microsoft Teams chat function unless you need to communicate that you're experiencing technical difficulties. Finally, please note that this meeting is being recorded. It will be available on the city's website at LebanonNH.gov/AgendaCenter. And with that, I will turn it back over to the Vice Chair Mercer, Vice Chair Mercer. And Janet, you're muted in case you...
Thank you, Mr. Corwin. I will also let everyone know that Mr. Kopp and Heffer is unable to attend tonight, so I will chair this evening's meeting. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the September 8th meeting, and I will appoint Mr. McDonough as a regular voting member for the purpose of approval of minutes since I believe you attended that meeting. Do we have a motion?
This is Chair, or Vice Chair, I should say. It's Al Patterson. I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do we have a second?
Is Dan Nash our second?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
This is Jeremy Katz. I have a few potential corrections to identify.
Go ahead, Mr. Katz.
So, on page three, line 11, where it says there is no vegetation near the stockade fence, my recollection of that discussion was that there is no year-round vegetation near that stockade fence. There were no evergreens planted there, so just adding the word, the words "year-round" before vegetation. Then if you move down to line 29, it says the building is not amendable to other uses. I think it meant to say amendable to other uses. You want to remove the D to make it amendable. If there are no questions on those two, I have a few more on following pages to bring up.
Ms. Billings, are you on?
I am on. Mr. Katz, could you please restate the page and line of the amendable?
It is page three, line 29.
Thanks very much. I think I'm good with all of that.
Okay. And then, just moving on to page five, at line 47, where it says Attorney Burke, this was the convenient FD application, and it was Attorney Hollis who was responding, so just change Burke to Hollis. Okay, and then, on page eight, at line six, the last word is ceases, and it should be ceases, C-E-A-S-E-S, or should it cease, C-E-A-S-E, cease as opposed to seize?
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Katz. Any other comments on the minutes? Okay, hearing none. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Patterson?
I approve the minutes. I agree to approve the minutes. Vote two.
I'm sorry, I'm muted. I vote to approve.
Okay. Mr. Nash?
I vote yes.
Mr. Katz?
I vote yes.
And I will abstain since I was absent, so it's four yeses and one abstention. Okay, we will move on to the public hearings for tonight. There are four hearings that were continued from the last meeting. The first of those is in the matter of William M. and Lori Grizzi at 351 Meriden Road, tax map 167, lot 16, zoned RL1. It's a request for a variance from Article 3, Section 312.2 of the zoning ordinance to allow a towing business and vehicular impound yard, and from Section 205 to allow two principal structures on the property where only one principal structure is permitted. This is, this was re-noticed due to the second variance added to the application. So, do we have Attorney Burke here?
Yes, this is Nick Burke. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Ms. Mercer, I'm sorry, this is Tim. Did you want to appoint an alternate to sit?
Oh, I'm sorry. So, if I, was I correct, Mr. Newlove, you were not at the meeting, the last meeting?
You are correct. I was not.
And neither was I, unfortunately. But Mr. McDonough, you were there, right?
I was, yes.
Okay, so for this one, I think I will appoint Mr. McDonough again, and I'll get Mr. Newlove on the next one, stand by.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Attorney Burke, please continue.
Yeah, thank you. So, at the September 8th hearing, it was raised for the first time that an additional variance was going to be required because of there being two principal structures on the property, and so the matter was continued to this meeting on the condition that I file an amended application, which I have done with an amended supporting statement. At the last hearing, questions were raised regarding the exact location of the boundary between the Grizzi property and the neighboring property owned by the Mons, as well as the location of the plantings that have been planted by Mr. Grizzi and the stockade fence around the impound yard that has been constructed. The day after the hearing, Mr. Grizzi engaged the services of Pathways Consulting to prepare an updated survey plan definitively establishing the boundary between the two properties and locating the plantings and the stockade fence that's been constructed. Skip Nallett from Pathways Consulting is doing that work, but is unable to complete it in time for today's hearing, and we do not have the updated plan, which I think would address many of the concerns that were raised at the last hearing. So, based on that, I am requesting that we continue this matter until the next hearing of the ZBA to allow Mr. Nallett to complete his work and submit the revised plan, which will show the boundary and the improvements that have been made in accordance with the prior variance which had been granted.
Okay, so that's a request to continue to the October 5th meeting, correct?
That is correct. Yes, please.
Okay. At this point, I will open it up to the board for questions to the applicants about the
This is Jeremy Katz. I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, Attorney Burke, I understand that the survey is sort of one of the remaining items, but considering the fact that we've now had three separate meetings that you, as well as an interested butter has appeared, wouldn't it just make more sense to just accomplish everything we can in terms of testimony on all other issues at this meeting and simply continue out until the next meeting just for the input of the survey?
I'm perfectly willing to do that if that's the board's wish.
Thank you. No more questions.
Other questions from the board?
It's Al Patterson.
Go ahead, Mr. Patterson.
It's a question for Attorney Burke, somewhere along those lines. I was gonna, I want to echo about getting most of the testimony, and this has been going on for quite some time, and I think one way or another it should be resolved. And the land issue, the battery issue, I think there's other issues that we can give testimony tonight and resolve those pretty, pretty easily in regards to present. I think that other issue is more of a documentary issue.
Again, that's fine with me, Mr. Patterson. If we want to proceed with any questioning, I'm prepared to go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Mr. Corwin, it seems that the, we're at a crossroads here. There's a request to continue, and I can open it up for public comment on the request, or it sounds like the board would like to continue with the rest of the hearing this evening, and Mr. Burke agrees to do that. Does staff have any comments on that?
Well, I think if the request is to continue the hearing until October 5th, that was already sort of built into the motion that the board made and approved at the last meeting. So, this wasn't going to be decided tonight anyway, and so October 5th is in line with what, is in line with how this was already going to proceed. So, you know, I think it's, what Mr. Katz said and what Mr. Patterson said certainly makes sense to me, and if the rest of the board agrees, then I think, please, please any board member correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're at the point of allowing or hearing from the public. I think the applicant had made their presentation, and the board had given comments, many of which were related to the adequacy, if you will, of the site plan, which is why the applicant is looking to amend that plan. But, but, but again, if anyone, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if the hearing moves forward tonight, you're at the point now where you're hearing, where you're going to open it up to public comment.
Okay. Thank you. So...
Ms. Mercer, this is Nick Burke again. I don't mean to interrupt, but if we're going forward with a public hearing, there was an issue raised by Mr. Kopp and Heffer at the last meeting with regard to hardship that I would like to address.
Yeah, I was just going to ask you, Mr. Burke, if you had anything else to add to your presentation in light of the fact that we're going forward?
There is, yes, thank you.
Okay, please go ahead.
At the last meeting, Mr. Kopp and Heffer asked whether there was, or suggested there was no hardship here because Mr. Grizzi should have known at the time that he purchased the property in 2003 that there, that the dual use as a principal residence and a commercial use was not allowed without a variance, and suggested that the inquiry done at the time that Mr. Grizzi purchased the property should have revealed this. And I will admit, back in 2003, I was the attorney who did the title search when Mr. and Mrs. Grizzi purchased this property. The, I retrieved the file, and I took a look at the work that was done back then. This property was purchased and financed as a residential mortgage loan purchase, and the request from the financing bank was for a title opinion with regard to whether the property was marketable. Residential title searches do not typically include a search of the records in the municipality determined the status of zoning. Rather, in order to establish marketability, a title search involves an examination of the records in the registry of deeds to determine whether the owner that is selling the property has marketable title to sell it and whether there are any encumbrances that need to be taken care of at the closing. In commercial purchases or purchases of commercial businesses, the bank may request a separate zoning opinion, but this was not the case in this matter. This was a residential mortgage loan, and the title opinion that was rendered by me, as is the case in almost all residential title opinions, was limited to an examination of the land records, which determined that the Horns, who were the former owners, had marketable title to the property. So, there was no indication, there was no inquiry requested with regards to zoning. There was nothing that Mr. Grizzi should have been aware of. He was purchasing a property from the Horns that had been used prior to his purchase as a dual residential and commercial property, and in fact, had been used in both capacities by the previous owner all the way back to approximately 1986. So, with regard to the hardship standard, until brought to his attention by the planning office, Mr. Grizzi was not aware that there was an issue with regard to zoning and therefore not allowing him to continue the use, which has been continuous since he purchased in 2003, and the commercial use has been in continuous use on the property since 1986, would actually constitute a hardship to him. So, that's my response to the inquiry by Mr. Kopp and Heffer at the last meeting. With that, I think we've presented everything that we would like to. We are going to have an updated plan that will establish a common boundary and the location of the plantings and the stockade fence, which we can submit to the board as soon as we receive them.
Thank you, Attorney Burke. I'll turn it over to the board. Is there anyone who has additional questions before I open it up to the public?
This is Jeremy Katz. I have a few questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Katz.
So, so, Mr. Burke, my first, Attorney Burke, my first question for you is, after the last hearing, there was a later filing, or there was a filing dated September 14th made by Darren Carter that's in the package, as well as a filing from September 9th by Matt Maughan, who was sent an email via Mr. Corwin. And I didn't know if you had a chance to review that and if you had any response that you wanted to put on the record to the statements that are made by either of those parties.
I'm not sure that I have seen, but I will look for it, the submission by Mr. Maughan. I know that he had previously submitted a long objection to our project. With respect to Mr. Carter, I have reviewed what he says, and while it's not in my supporting statement with the current application. Mr. Carter operates a competing towing business on the other side of town. He has an impound yard that is located in the very same RL1 zone over on Rudesborough Road as the Grizzi property, RL1. And after it was brought to his attention by the planning department that he needed a variance, he submitted an application, and after review by the ZBA, he was granted the variance to allow his use of the impound yard in the same zone over on Rudesborough Road. I know that Mr. Carter has been at every single hearing through this multi-year process objecting to Mr. Grizzi's application, and I honestly can't understand why he has taken quite such an interest, except that in his last paragraph of his submission, he actually, very last sentence, he says, "I take offense to that if Mr. Grizzi put more energy into his own business instead of trying to put me out of business, he may not be here now." So, I would submit that Mr. Carter's objections is really more of a, that of a competing business than of a concerned person who lives on the opposite side of town and is not directly impacted by this.
Okay, thank you. And then, just my second question is, at the last meeting, I had stated that, you know, really, the person best prepared to talk about what might have been in his mind as he was purchasing the property back in about a decade and a half ago would be Mr. Grizzi, and he wasn't able to join on last time. You know, I appreciate the arguments that you're making, but it might be somewhat more persuasive if Mr. Grizzi could offer some testimony about what he found attractive about the property and about that industrial garage at the time that he purchased it.
Thank you, and I'm hoping, because we've tried to arrange it, that Mr. Grizzi has been able to join us by telephone, and if he is there, Bill, would you please respond?
Mr. Grizzi, if you're muted, you have to push star six to unmute on the telephone.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
This is Bill Grizzi.
You do seem to have an echo. Are you logged in twice?
No, I'm on the cell phone.
You're good now? Yep, that's much better. Please go ahead.
But Bill, did you hear Mr. Katz's questions about what was in your mind when you purchased the property?
I bought it because of the garage, one of my vehicles, and the yard.
And Bill, did you understand that there was prior commercial use of that property?
Yes, that's why I bought it, off the Horns.
Mr. Grizzi, this is Jeremy Katz. Could you describe what, what use somebody who doesn't have a business could have for that large garage that is on that property?
Hold on, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Bill, can you hear? Can you hear me, Bill?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Katz asked what other uses could be made of the commercial building other than commercial uses on that property, if I understand him correctly?
Correct.
I guess if you wanted to use it for storage, which basically I do, I pack my vehicles in it, but I mean, it's a concrete slab with a metal building around it. Sorry, I never really... I want to be honest.
Sorry, let me ask the question differently. Attorney Burke, you could repeat it if somehow I'm not coming through loud enough, but if the property did not have that large lot and did not have that large garage, would it have been attractive for you to purchase?
No.
Thank you.
Because I was looking for a place for my business.
All right. No further questions, Ms. Mercer.
Thank you, Mr. Katz. Thank you, Mr. Grizzi. I'll turn it over to other board members. Mr. McDonough, do you have any questions?
I have no questions, thank you.
Mr. Nash, any questions?
No further questions at this time.
Mr. Patterson, any questions? You broke up there.
I have a few questions at this time, but I do have a comment I'd like to make before we start.
Okay, well, let me, let me ask, Mr. Newlove, I know you're not voting on this, but do you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Patterson, go ahead and make your comment, and then I will open it up for the public to make comments.
Yeah, last minute late, it was pretty clear that...
Hey, Mr. Patterson, if you turn off, you're breaking up a lot. You might want to turn your video off. It's pretty choppy. Go ahead and give it a try.
If you can hear me, I do want to be sure that when we start this hearing, it's based on this hearing and evidence before us. I don't want to, I don't think the board needs to, it is a new hearing, so we're hearing new evidence. I don't think we need to, you know, hearings at a place prior to... I'm sure it's, we tried to get a lot, and it carries on.
Mr. Patterson, you were breaking up, but I think what I heard you say was that you wanted to remind everyone that this is a new hearing. It's not a continuation of the old hearing, so we're looking for testimony on this application, the new application. Is that correct?
That is, thank you.
Okay, still choppy, but I think that was correct. Okay, at this point in time, I will open it up for comments from the public. Tim, do you have any announcements to make before we open it up? Reminders?
No, I do not.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak?
Mr. Maughan has his hand raised.
Mr. Maughan, please come on the audio.
Yes, hello, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, I appreciate everyone for...
Excuse me, hi. I hate to interrupt you. This is Linda. Could you please state your name and spell it for me? Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Sorry about that.
Linda, thank you. So, my name is Matt Maughan, M-A-T-T, last name is spelled M-A-U-G-H-A-N.
And can you also state for the record your interest in the application, so that, are you in a butter?
Yes.
We all know you are, but, okay, thank you.
Yes, I am in a butter.
I was trying to remind myself to ask everyone that tonight, Linda caught me, so...
It's a good reminder. I should have known the procedure from the last several years.
No, it's good, now I should be good for the rest of the night. Please carry on with your comments, Mr. Maughan.
Good. No, I do appreciate more member Patterson's comments that this is a, to be thought of as a new hearing. In that, in that regard, I would ask again that the board think of this as, you know, according to the rules of the zoning board, which is that they should consider the application ex nihilo, meaning that if there's, if there was nothing else that existed at the site, and this was to be requested as a new site, would that be, would that be granted? be granted? And sort of going from there, you know, I thought, I thought a couple of things were interesting on Attorney Burke's comments. One is that the, the loan that was sought was a residential mortgage loan, not a commercial property loan. It was, you know, from the bank's point of view, this was to be a residence, not a business. And that kind of fits, because this is a residential property. It's zoned as RL one. And I think that is, you know, one of the questions to be taken into account from the board is, what does that mean? And, and is that, is the use of this property being adhered to similar to other RL one properties? So, you know, I just go down each point here. The, the first is that the variance will not be contrary, contrary to the public interest. So again, just to, to reiterate, you know, my, my points here is that for the variance to be contrary to the public interest, it must unduly into a marked degree violate the basic zoning objectives of the zoning ordinance. And so I ask, what are those, those basic zoning ordinance for RL one? And, and does this fit? You know, should a business owner who has a towing yard property on a, on a property zone for commercial purposes, purposes be allowed to operate a commercial towing yard on a property zone as RL one? You know, if I was taking a step back and I was, I had, I had a business, that business was, had a commercial property that was zoned for that purpose, and it grew beyond that, I think the logical next step is to think, well, I need to go find another commercial property in order for me to expand my business. That to me is logical. And I think that is, some of the, the question that's here is, is if I decided tomorrow for, you know, for me to start a commercial business, again, thinking ex nihilo, would that be allowed for me to start a commercial business on this property? The other is, is, the second point here is the spirit of the ordinance is observed. So again, the, the previous testimony of the zoning board, the applicant and his attorney have conceded that the previous businesses that operated at the property are materially different from a towing yard. I would also refer to the zoning board rule again, that, you know, a previous improper use of a property can't be justified, can't be used to justify granting this particular variance. So just because it is, it is an illegal, it's an illegal use that has existed for many years does not mean that suddenly, you know, because I'm asking permission today, that that's, that's, that's okay, right? That that, and that, that previous improper use can be used as justification. To the third point, substantial justice being done, again, Mr. Grizziotti needs more towing yard space beyond what he has currently used as a commercial property. So the next logical step is to find another commercial property. I, I would submit that it is illogical to conclude that the only action that is available to Mr. Grizziotti is to use his property zoned as RL one for commercial purposes. That is quite the failure of imagination on, I think, anyone's point of view. That, and, and, you know, secondly, that this particular building can only be used. I'm going to get to that later, though. The next point, number four, is that the surrounding properties are not diminished. So far, there has been no evidence presented from Mr. Grizziotti or his attorney that the properties have or have not been diminished. Basically, it amounts to, well, because we said so. There's been no evidence, which is quite frankly, very common in this, in all the submissions that have happened over the last two years. There's been very little supporting evidence, most of which amounted to, it was there before, and believe me because I say so. So to that point, there's been no, no demonstration of, of fact. And on the fifth point, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship, or owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. Again, I go back to their, really hanging their hat on this building. Because this building existed, there is no other use for this property besides a towing yard, even though the previous how many ever businesses were not towing yards at all. So, so that's kind of irrelevant, what, what was there before. And the fact that this one building is there, to say that it can only be used for, you know, for car maintenance and, and for a towing yard is, is really a stretch. And asking everyone not to spend five minutes, because I think if you do spend five minutes thinking about possible uses for the building, you would come up with any number. It could be a woodworking shop, it could be, you could do, you know, other, you know, expand other crafts. You could turn it into a chicken coop and house 400 chickens. I mean, literally, it doesn't take long to come up with the other possibilities for what that building can be used for, and, and not have it be used as a, as a towing yard. And those other uses, again, would conform to the purposes of, of an RL one property. So, lastly, I'd just like to remind the board that all five of those requirements must be met in order for a variance to be granted. And I think with very little effort, it's clear that there are holes in each of the arguments provided by the applicant and his attorney. And I'd kind of turn my attention to the next point, which is there's been quite a bit of, you know, unmercifully, you'd call it a lie. If you're merciful, you'd call it a stretch of the truth, or a fast-handed, handed dealing, when there have been questions about, you know, what has happened on the property. You know, we know that, again, that this kind of goes to, what if, if, if all of these are to be ignored, and the board decides that, well, we, we can do some gymnastics and decide that, that all of this is, is fine, will he, will Mr. Grizziotti adhere to any of the, of the restrictions that are placed upon him in order to, to run this commercial business on an RL one property? And, you know, I've submitted evidence that that's, that's not the case. You know, in fact, this whole thing would be done if he had lived up to the, what he promised the board that he would do. And in no case did he. He parked over 20 cars on the property for greater than 10 days at a clip. He did not build the fence when he was, and I, again, show, I can show that he put up some fence, but then didn't put up the rest of the fence, because he had no intention of putting up the rest of the fence. He was required to put up an eight-foot fence, he, he bought a six-foot fence. And again, with five minutes of time, you can find eight-foot sections, eight-foot high sections of fencing to install. So there's very little intent on Mr. Grizziotti's part to adhere to any of the restrictions that are placed before him. And I bring that up because obviously, I don't get another chance to talk, so if there's, you know, if, if the board decides that his previous behavior, which shows, I think, a clear contempt for the law, and, and contempt for what the board has, has required of him, decides to go forward, then, you know, I would ask that there are restrictions placed on, on Mr. Grizziotti in order to balance, again, the, the, the needs of, you know, as an abutter, who is trying to adhere to the spirit of an RL one property. And I listed those, which by the way, most of these, I think almost all of them are exact reiteration of what he was previously asked to adhere to, but, but did not. And, and so I, that's, that's what I ask. I will stop there. If you'd like to, if you're, if you have read the comments in detail, they are listed in the, in the packet.
Thank you, Mr. Maughan. I do have one question for you. You referenced it in your testimony this evening, and then also in the statement that you submitted in writing, where you say that according to the zoning board rules, that the zoning board should consider this application for variance ex nihilo, nihilo, right? Did I say that right? Meaning, my Latin's not very good. Meaning if nothing currently existed at the site, do the facts support providing a variance? Where is that in the rules? I've looked through our bylaws, and I've looked through the zoning ordinance of Lebanon, and I may have missed it, but I couldn't find it.
Well, I would defer to a previous board member who brought that up when it was, when it was, this was a, when his previous variance was granted. So I, he stated the rules. I, I find, I found it odd at the time that I couldn't find those either when I was searching through, but he had his binder, and I don't know if there's another set of rules that each board member gets in order to, to, you know, be get oriented to the, to the work of the zoning board.
Okay.
But it does make sense, right? This is, this is a, again, it makes sense because it, it does not make sense for something to be done for however amount of time illegally, or, and not in conformance with the zoning restrictions. And then to claim that obviously, it must continue because it has been done this way for X amount of time. That would, that would mean that there really is no rule of law. We, or that the rules of the board are meaningless, right? Anyone could do anything and just hope they don't get caught for a long enough period of time and then get grandfathered in.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Maughan?
This is Jeremy Katz, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Okay. And, and by the way, just, I believe that when Mr. Maughan was talking about the ex nihilo, having sat on the early 2019 hearing, it was Jonathan Perez who had discussed that in the, at the board. So just if, if that helps, just provide a little background on that. But, Mr. Maughan, last year, when you testified at the sort of first variance hearing, you had testified that the property that, that you now owed, prior to buying it, that property stayed on the market for longer and it sold for less than it probably could have as a result of the Grizziotti property was, you know, do you recall that testimony?
Yes.
Okay. And, you know, would you, just because we're not incorporating the last record into this, would you, you know, I assume that your, your feelings are consistent to your prior testimony on that, correct?
Well, my feelings are consistent. I would say that this time around, I, I kind of took a different tack and decided to point out that the applicant has not provided any evidence to support his claim that property values have not diminished. That's being one of five things that he would have to provide.
Understood. Okay. And then also, when we did the site walk, and we viewed the property from, we viewed the Grizziotti property from yours, and we were near the back of, of your property, and we saw the stockade fence, and you, you pointed out that there were not evergreen shrubs, and that sort of when fall came around, and all the leaves fell off of the vegetation, you would be left with, with the fence there. You, you made a comment that really, it wasn't the use itself that, that had offended you, it was that Grizziotti had committed to meeting all those conditions, and, and it was really that the, there was, there was no assurance that those conditions would be met or would be adhered to, you know, that offended you. Is there sort of, kind of a primary grievance that you have that we should kind of keep in mind about, you know, the view from your property to that property, or, or the other concerns that you have, being around the idea of ensuring that, you know, your concerns are taken into account? You know, not so much with the objection to the use, but the objection to what you might have to, you know, kind of live with, or what are the prior variants you had to live with?
Yeah, sure. And I'd like to frame this in a couple ways. I do appreciate that several of my concerns very early on have been figured out. So, you know, there were these concerns about what was a potential hazardous waste, or, you know, I don't know a better way to put that, I don't think, you know, hazardous to me is not hazardous to other people, because I work in the medical field, but, you know, I'm not talking about he's dumping chemotherapy, but he's, you know, there were, there were bins that were, that there was oil, and those were not constructed in a way to be buried, and yet they were. And, you know, again, not, not in conformance. So, so a lot of those concerns have been figured out. What has not been figured out is primarily noise, actually. So Mr. Grizziotti uses, the towing trucks are large. These are large trucks that back up, and when they back up, there's the, the beeping noise, which is quite loud. And to, to park and to offload, they back up. There's a lot of cars that go in and out throughout the day and throughout the night. As a matter of fact, you know, again, this, this idea that hours of operation should be limited to 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, just a week ago, there was a car that was brought to the property at, I believe it was 8:30 PM. You know, and, and again, it's loud when it comes in, it's, it's very loud beeping as it, as it backs up. Often, his drivers honk the horns, which these are not just regular honking of the horns, these are very large trucks that honk. Again, I don't know why, but they do. And so I would say that a lot of it happens to be noise. And, you know, if, if his property was to be used just to service the trucks periodically, that would greatly reduce the traffic that comes in and out of the property. I, I don't see that there is, you know, therefore, this, this building exists, therefore, it must be a towing yard. He very well could use that property, or that, that building to do routine maintenance on his trucks from time to time, and have them there, you know, once a month. And that would greatly decrease the noise and, and traffic going in and out of the property. I would just also point out that, you know, the other abutters, there, there's several, several acres of forest between 351 and whoever is up the street from Mr. Grizziotti. And across the street, the Murrays don't live there. They, they visit periodically, mostly on weekends during the mornings. So, you know, this is not really an issue that other people are having to deal with. This is largely my issue, because there isn't a sound break, and there isn't, you know, there, there isn't that reduction and adherence to any restriction on Mr. Grizziotti's part.
Thank you. No further questions, Ms. Mercer.
Thank you, Mr. Katz. Do any other board members have questions for Mr. Maughan? I have just one or two other questions, Mr. Maughan, before you, before we go on to the next person. You talked about just recently, a vehicle being dropped off at 8:30 at night, and trucks coming and going. Do you, how many, how many trucks have you observed that Mr. Grizziotti keeps over there? Tow trucks? That's the, the actual tow trucks?
How many tow trucks? I mean, I've got photo evidence of there being four at a time, again, outside of what the restrictions of the, of the previous variants were. How many? And then, as I said earlier, how many cars in excess of 20 for greater than 10 days?
In the impound?
Yeah.
And over the last, say, 30 days, how much coming and going is there in the hours outside of the proposed operating hours? So like 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM?
Well, in the previous, I would say it has dropped a little, which has been appreciated and noticeable that there is lower traffic, although there was, again, why it was so noticeable is that it, it, it's like it's, you know, and when it happens again, it's hard to miss, you know what I mean? I mean, this is, you know, when it happens at 8:30, 9 o'clock, 11 o'clock, 11:30. I mean, this is, you know, when it happens at 8:30, 9 o'clock, 11 o'clock, 11:30, it's hard to miss.
So is it multiple times a week, every day, multiple times a day in those hours?
Uh, it, you know, kind of depends, but it has been as much as a couple of times a week.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mon. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak?
Uh, Jen, uh, this is Tim. Darren Carter has his hand up.
Mr. Carter, please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
Okay. A couple of things I'd like to, my name is Darren Carter, D-A-R-R-E-N, last name is Carter, C-A-R-T-E-R, 15 Rudesborough Road in Lebanon.
Okay, Mr. Carter, go ahead.
Yeah. So a few things I'd like to cover if I could. Mr., one of the letters or the last letter that Mr. Burke, I think, gave to the board, he, he stated in there, and this is yet again, another misstatement or lie or whatever you want to put it, where they say that Mr. Grizafi did not know that he wasn't supposed to run a business at 351 Meriden Road. And in my letter that I wrote to you, it says, I'm reading from part of the letter, it says, Ms. Hennessy states, "The 351 Meriden Road property is not commercial. A tow yard is not permitted and a notice of violations with an S had previously been sent." So there's no possible way that Mr. Grizafi didn't know that his yard couldn't be used for a tow yard or an impound yard because the person, I think that Tim Cohen took her place, had written letters previously to Mr. Grizafi about that problem. That's one thing. Another, another thing is when Mr. Burke said that he didn't understand why I was so involved in this, I'm, I'm the guy originally who, who put the complaint out about the yard because I'd been harassed by Mr. Grizafi for 20 plus years with my own tow business, myself and my son. And I had just had had enough of it. I had gone to the police department about it, trying to get everything done that I could get done. And I, nothing, nothing has changed even since. So that's why I actually put the complaint in there about that yard. And with my yard, when I got the variance, I had supporting letters from all of my abutters, the state police, the Lebanon police, the Lebanon fire department. I had letters from all those people about my yard. And the fact is, you can't see my yard from the road at all. And Mr. Grizafi and I, even though we have tow trucks, his business is different than mine. I don't, I don't cater to AAA towing or any of that kind of stuff. We do do roadside service, but we don't do it like with AAA and, and GEICO and Progressive and all that kind of stuff. And we don't do any type of mechanic work whatsoever at all in my yard. My yard just strictly stores vehicles until an insurance company comes and picks them up or we bring them, you know, wherever they need to go. And the other, the other thing that the board seems to has forgotten about, back when Mr. Grizafi, with his other yard, his commercial piece of property, when he was going for a variance for that yard, the, the town granted him 20 spots in that yard to use, which I go by on a daily basis, sometimes multiple times a day bringing cars into Vermont. And there's almost never a car in that impound yard at his commercially zoned property. And this particular property at 351 Meriden Road was supposed to be for overflow only. There's been, there's been time after time where we've done accidents at the same scene, myself and Mr. Grizafi, when they see his tow truck leaves, it's always headed to his Meriden property. It never goes to the Main Street property, which was supposed to be the original impound yard. So that's another reason why I was kind of involved in it because it, it just kind of, I just can't see why he can't use his piece of property down on Main Street versus his home property. It is, it's definitely not a hardship because he already currently has, he already currently has a commercially zoned impound yard for 20 cars. He just chooses not to use it for whatever reason, I don't know.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Carter. Anything further?
Nope.
Does anyone on the board have questions for Mr. Carter? Hearing none, we'll move on. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak about this application?
This is Tim. I see Mark Horn is on the meeting. I don't know if he, if this is the application he's here for, but I'm not, I don't see anyone else in, in particular, but maybe we should give folks a minute to speak up. And again, if you're on, if you're on the phone, press star six.
Mr. Horn, is that you?
That is me.
Okay, can you spell your name for Ms. Billings and state your interest in this application?
Well, my name is Mark, M-A-R-K, Horn, H-O-R-N-E. I, I. Mr. Grizafi, believing and knowing in my, the, I just, this was a permitted truckyard by the city of Lebanon for Mr. Pat Laundry to have a garage there to work on his trucks, to have a truck garage. I worked there. They had more than one truck. Mr. Nash knows that this was a permitted, in my belief, has to know this, they didn't just drop this garage in the middle of Lebanon without permission and run it for as many years as they did. Also, I used it as a commercial property. That's what it is. That's what it was. It was permitted by the city of Lebanon for this garage to be a truck garage for Mr. Pat Laundry and Sons to run their trucking business. And, and I just don't understand how it's become what it has become. I think the neighbor, he knew what was there when he bought the building, very much so, knew that there was a commercial business there, has been a commercial business there for a long time. You know, Mr. Carter, I, I, Mr. Carter has a grudge with Mr. Grizafi. This is his way of dealing with it. I think it's sad that, you know, that everything that they do is being spied on by these people. And, you know, Darren Carter, for a lot of years, had a tow yard, an impound yard at his house that wasn't permitted until this all started and he didn't want to get caught in the middle. I think that's his issue. But I think this was a permitted yard from the get-go. I used it commercially. Mr. Laundry used it commercially. It was permitted to build this garage. And I think that what Mr. Grizafi is doing is acceptable and it's not just because it was there, it was permitted. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Are there any questions from the board? Okay.
This is Chair, this is Vice Chair, it's Al Patterson. I have a question for Mr. Horn.
Go ahead.
Mr. Horn, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
When you owned the property, do you recall how it was taxed?
I believe it was taxed as a commercial property. I believe there was two tax bills. There was one for the house and the property that went with the house and the, the garage property. And I'm not positive of that, but I believe that's my best recollection. And I may be all wrong, but I believe that's what it was.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you, Mr. Horn.
Thank you.
Mr. Corwin, is there anyone else waiting to ask questions or is there anyone on the line that would like to make statement in the public?
If, if you're on the phone, press star six to unmute yourself.
Okay. If the board's okay with it, I'd like to ask Attorney Burke and Mr. Grizafi one or two more questions before we, I suppose we'll continue the public hearing since there's going to be more information submitted, right, Tim?
Correct.
We can't close the public hearing, so, okay.
Right.
Yep. Mr. Burke, are you there?
I am here. Could you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. I have a couple of questions. You know, I, I was on the board when we granted the relief for the property on Main Street there in West Lebanon. And there was a lot of discussion about how that would decrease the usage at the Meriden Road property and that the Meriden Road property would be just used for overflow. And I recall those conversations and I think those conversations came up again when, when this application originally came before the board. So I, I have a couple of questions. One, why are there so many trucks parked at the Meriden Road property? Because I specifically recall talk, discussing the numbers of trucks and that trucks, some of the trucks would regularly and only be parked overnight at the Main Street property. And Mr. Grizafi's truck that he was using and maybe one other truck would be parked in the garage if it was being worked on. But this wouldn't be the place to park all the trucks. And, you know, Mr. Mon said he's seen four trucks there at a time. I actually have also seen four trucks there when I've driven by and I go by there probably a few times a month. And then my second question is, how is the, how, how, how is it split up for terms, in terms of taking towed vehicles to the Main Street property? How many vehicles go there? And, and then the overflow, you know, how does that factor into the overflow usage at the Meriden Road property, which is originally what that was supposed to be for? So those are my two questions.
Okay, well, I, I may not be able to answer those directly and I may ask Mr. Grizafi to chime in. I know that the space available on the West Lebanon Main Street property is, is limited, so there is not sufficient space to store all of the vehicles that they may be involved with at any particular time. With respect to actually how many are stored, where, where the trucks get parked, I would ask Mr. Grizafi if he can hear me to, to respond to that question. Bill, if you can, can you respond to Ms. Mercer? Are you there, Bill?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Sorry, it kicked me out. This is Bill Grizafi. The only vehicles that usually go to 351 are the abandoned vehicles. All the wrecked vehicles, because of course there isn't many right now, go to the Main Street. The reason there's four trucks at the shop, two are wreckers that don't get used much in the summertime unless I'm driving one. The little flatbed is the one I drive most of the time in and out. I have two drivers, so there's a spare flatbed, which is usually packed inside or in the impound yard.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other questions from the board for Attorney Burke or Mr. Grizafi?
This is Vice Chair, it's Al Patterson. I have a question for either Attorney Burke or Mr. Grizafi.
Go ahead.
In our walkthrough, I believe, of the property and then in the previous, on the September 8th meeting, there was concern about employees parking in that area to the left just as you pull in. And, and I believe it was testimony by one of you that the part, that most, if there's employees, they park on the east side of the building so they, they're not seen. Is that, is that true or not true? Is that something? Well, I guess one of the.
That is where they're supposed to park.
Okay. So you instruct them to park there so they should not be parking in that other location, correct?
Right, because that's usually a turnaround when you back out of the garage.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I have multiple photo evidence that's not the case.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mon. If there are no further questions from the board, is there a motion to continue this hearing to October 5th?
Jeremy Katz still moved.
Dan Nash, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this hearing to October 5th. Mr. Patterson, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Mr. McDonough?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Nash?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Katz?
I vote yes.
And I vote yes, so Ms. Billings, it's unanimous. Continue to the next meeting. Okay, the next hearing is in the matter of Ann Eleanor White at 57 Mascoma Street, Tax Map 91, Lot 108, Zoned R3. This was also continued from the last meeting on September 8th and the applicant requests a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section 703.1 of the zoning ordinance to reconstruct and expand an existing detached garage that is nonconforming to the 15-foot minimum side yard required from the lot line, Shareable 7, Cameron Avenue, Tax Map 91, Lot 107. Is there anyone from the applicant here?
Yes.
Please state your name and your interest in this application. And spell your name too, please, for Ms. Billings.
Okay. My last name is White, like the colored, W-H-I-T-E. First name is Ann, A-N hyphen E-L-E-A-N-O-R.
And you, you are the property owner?
I am, I am the property owner.
Okay, thank you. Please go ahead. So this was continued in my understanding and you also submitted some stuff to Mr. Corwin, correct?
Yes.
So, from the last meeting, I think there was discussion about a survey on this property.
We, so we, myself and my neighbor, we talked to Park Industries and they had not surveyed this. They did, however, we went out with, they went out with both titles and did some measuring. We have, I have, we only have the one rear pin that's between the, the, between the property line and we have a marked rock. And I sent those pictures to, to Mr. Corwin. And the, the next door neighbor and I have discussed it and feel that that is, is very close. I was not able to get a survey or two, was only able to get one survey or to even respond to me. And then I gave him the couple more pieces of information he asked for and then was not able, and, and I have not heard back. I spoke with both Park and with, I can't remember the name of the engineering company. I'm sorry, I didn't write it down. And, and they do not have any information. We've, they spoke with, I can't think, the person in, I can't, I'm, I'm sorry, I've forgotten. They spoke with somebody that said that the line hasn't been surveyed in a long time. And so we did measurements from both deeds and felt that we, the pictures that I've sent to Mr. Corwin are as, as exact as, or as, as close as we can get. We felt, we both, we both, myself and my neighbor discussed it and felt that that was a fair line and that it would work for repairing the garage.
Thank you. Ms. White, I'm going to interrupt for one second. Mr. Newlove, you were appointed a full member for the purposes of voting on this application or for hearing this application tonight. Okay, thank you. Ms. White, when you refer to the neighbors, are you referring to the Aldriches?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything else to present to us this evening?
I don't, I don't believe so.
Okay, I will open it up to the board for questions.
Hi, this is David Newlove. I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Newlove.
So, I guess that you and Casey and Brian Aldrich have come to an agreement about what the property line is. But where, where the proposed garage is, is it going to, did you guys discuss removing of trees and the potential that the large oak tree and not impacting that with the root system?
Okay, it's not gonna, it's not going to impact the root system. Just for the record, it's a maple and not an oak. I don't know if that matters to people. And so the limbs are going to be cut on. And so the limbs are going to be cut on my side to the, to the roof line of, of the garage and are not going and will not affect their side of, of the tree.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes.
Mr. Nash, do you have any questions?
None at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Katz, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Patterson, any questions?
Not necessarily a question for Ms. White, but I just want to make sure I understand it correctly that between herself and the neighbor, I don't know, can you hear me, Ms. White?
Yes.
Okay, between yourself and the neighbor, you've, you've come up with kind of a, I read about trimming the branches back and all parties are in agreeance of that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to be, make sure I got that right. Thank you.
And the Aldriches are on this call, so I'm not answering for them.
Oh, okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure that was your understanding as well.
That was my understanding, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McDonough, any questions from you?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, and I have no question, no further questions at this time, so I will go ahead and open it up for comments from the public.
Ms. Mercer, I'm sorry, this is Tim. I'm wondering if we can get some clarification from the applicant as to the exact distance based on the agreed to lot line, the, the exact distance of the existing garage from that agreed to lot line. And then just confirmation that the new garage will be no closer at any point to that agreed to lot line than it currently is.
Ms. White, did you make those measurements when you?
Yes, it's still, it's still four feet. I mean, that's where we originally thought the line was. It will not be any closer to the lot line. It's just going to be pushed back a little bit, pushed back on the property, not towards the property line. Does that make sense?
And when you push it, when you push it back, let me look at the, when you push it back, it doesn't, is your property line at an angle or is it, is the garage parallel to the property line?
It's, the garage is parallel to the property line.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, now I will open it up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak about this application?
This is Casey Aldrich.
Go ahead.
And we are, I'm here with my husband, Brian. We're the abutters on 7 Cameron Avenue. And I just wanted to say that we confirm what Ms. White is saying. We did meet and, and we're completely satisfied with the project moving forward so long as the trees don't need to be removed and we've been assured that the root system won't be damaged.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board for the Aldriches? Is there anyone else from the public who would like to comment? Tim, is there anyone with their hand up or anyone on the line?
I don't see any hands up.
Just as a reminder, if you're on the phone and you want to speak, you have to unmute yourself by pressing star six. Okay, hearing none. I will close the public hearing at this time and we can go to discussion. Any discussion from the board? I'll start with Mr. Patterson.
I'm, I'm all set. After the last meeting, my concern was the, what was answered tonight, so I have no further questions.
Thank you. Mr. Nash?
I agree with Al. The property line was my concern. I'm satisfied now and I'm ready with a motion when we get to that point.
Okay. Mr. Newlove?
I have no questions or concerns at this point. Thank you.
Mr. Katz?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. McDonough?
No questions, thank you.
All right, then, Mr. Nash, please go ahead with your motion.
On September 8th, 2020, and September 21st, 2020, at duly notice meetings of the Lebanon Zoning Board of Adjustment, there appeared Ann Eleanor White regarding 57 Mascoma Street, Tax Map 91, Lot 108, Zoned R3. Applicant requests a special exception pursuant to Article, Section 703 of the zoning ordinance to reconstrue and expand an existing detached garage that is conforming to the 15-foot minimum side yard required from the lot line shared with 7 Cameron Avenue, Tax Map 91, Lot 107. As a fact, there are eight. And I'll go on to conclusions of law. As a result of above findings of fact and testimony, and based on testimony given, application materials presented and supporting documents submitted, the board concludes the following with respect to the special exception criteria set forth in 813 of the zoning ordinance. One, the exception is specifically authorized by 703.1A of the zoning ordinance. Two, the following special conditions requirements of 703.1A are met. First, the reasonable use of abutting properties is not adversely affected by the proposed expansion. And the proposed expansion will not render the lot size proportionally less adequate, i.e. any aspect of the building or structure that is currently nonconforming cannot be made more nonconforming in the absence of a variance. Three, there are no violations of the zoning ordinance on the property that the granting a special exception would not remedy. I'm not aware of any zoning ordinance violations on the property. The area will not be adversely affected. Five, hazard or nuisance will be created. Six, existing or planned community facilities and services, including streets and highways, will not be adversely impacted. Seven, granting of the special exception will not result in undue municipal expense. Eight, proposed special exception will be developed in a matter compatible with the spirit and intent of the ordinance. Nine, the general welfare of the city will be protected. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Lebanon Zoning Board of Adjustment in this 21st day of September 2020 hereby grants the requested special exception for 703.1 of the zoning ordinance to allow the expansion of a nonconforming structure at 57 Mascoma Street, Tax Map 91, Lot 108, as set forth above and per testimony plans and materials submitted and per the following conditions. One, the applicant shall obtain a building permit for the proposed garage.
So we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it. It's Al Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Any discussion?
Excuse me, this is Linda Billings again. Can you confirm that the setback is four feet in that motion? In findings of fact?
It's in finding of fact number two.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Go ahead, Jeremy.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is Jeremy Katz. I just have a suggestion. If you look at finding of fact number eight, there's the abutter who brought up the concern about the vegetation of the property line. And you know, I would recommend clarifying fact eight to, at the September 8th hearing, just adding the date and then adding a finding of fact nine that at the September 21st hearing, the abutter Casey Aldrich appeared and, you know, confirmed that these concerns were addressed or something of that sort. Because otherwise it just sort of leaves it out there as a, as a concern without any, any resolution.
This is, this is Tim. Can I just make a suggestion based on Mr. Katz's?
Yes.
So, so finding of fact number eight would be, would remain as is, but would be preceded by, as Mr. Katz suggested, at the September 8th hearing, comma. And then finding, finding of fact number nine would be at the September 21st hearing. You know, Mr. and Mrs. Aldrich appeared and confirmed that they had met with the applicant subsequent to the September 8th hearing and, and, agreed on the location of the lot line and made an agreement to resolve their other concerns as well. And I can, I can trans, Ms. Billings, I can listen to the audio and transcribe that, that, that finding of fact, if you like.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Mr. Nash, is that acceptable to you?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Patterson, did you have a comment?
I have a question about that, though. I'm guessing my question would be, what would be the relevance of that? If one of the properties sold, this is agreement between the current landowners. I don't know is that if down the road, someone that would buy it and was in disagreement of how things were set up would, I guess I just, I might add that they were, that the Aldriches spoke in support of the project so long as, but I don't know. I guess I'm confused as to why this would be relevant, that's all.
Mr. Katz, do you want to address that? I think it was your suggestion, right?
Yeah, so, so my suggestion is really based on the fact that there was, you know, number eight as a finding of fact leaves it as essentially an open controversy. And in hearing the discussion today, it's my takeaway is that the concern that was brought up on September 8th has now been resolved to the satisfaction of the applicant as well as the abutter.
I just, I think less is more, that's all. I think that we're crawling into the weeds a little bit with the explanation, that's all. But with all due respect, that's just my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Go ahead, Mr. Nash.
This is Dan Nash. My thought had been to just say, for finding of fact nine, at the 21 September 20 hearing, the matter in finding of fact eight was resolved. If you want to use the kiss formula.
That works. Okay. If there's no further discussion, I will take a roll call vote. Mr. Newlove, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Ms. Mercer, I think you have to, you have to either, actually vote to amend the motion as presented or at least note that the motion is being adopted as amended.
Okay. Mr. Nash, would you like everyone to vote to amend the motion or are you accepting the changes to your motion?
I would accept the changes that I just recorded.
And Mr. Patterson seconded it, so were you okay with those changes that Mr. Nash just stated?
Yes, I am.
Does that satisfy your concern, Mr. Corwin?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay, going on, Mr. Newlove, do you still vote yes?
I still vote yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
And I vote yes, it's unanimous. Okay. Moving on, the next hearing, the applicant is,
Thank you very much.
Yes, you're welcome, thank you. Congratulations. The next hearing is for Visions for Creative Housing Solutions, 12 Green Street, Tax Map 92, Lot 131, Zoned R2. It's a request for a special exception pursuant to Article 3, Section 309.2 of the zoning ordinance to permit a group residence. Mr. Corwin, if I understand correctly, on this one, all the testimony was heard and comments from the public. Is that where we're at with this one?
Yeah, the hearing was more or less concluded, it was left open to, to allow for additional public comment. In the event anyone had difficulty participating in the hearing on September 8th, the planning department has received no additional comment from the public.
Is there anyone from the public on the line who wishes to comment about this application this evening? Who hasn't already done so? Okay, hearing none, then I will close the public hearing and we'll go to discussion amongst the board. Oh, for this one, I will appoint Mr. Newlove again.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Mr. Patterson, any discussion?
I have no, no, nothing further to add.
Mr. Nash?
I have nothing further and I have a draft decision. I do see a hand up there on the chart, Sylvia Dow.
Tim, should I reopen the public hearing?
I'm just, hello, I'm just the executive director of Visions for Creative. I just wanted you to know that I was here.
Thank you. Okay. And did you have any additional information? I can reopen the public hearing since we're in this strange environment, virtual environment, and we missed you. Or if you're okay, we'll go ahead with our discussion and.
Well, we already spoke last month.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, Mr. Nash, you have a motion ready, you said?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Katz, any discussion?
I have no discussion, thank you.
Mr. Newlove, any discussion?
No discussion.
And Mr. Patterson, I already asked you, correct?
Yes, you did.
Okay. And I have no questions either. Mr. Nash, would you like to go ahead with your motion?
Certainly. On September 8th, 2020, and September 21st, 2020, at duly notice meetings of the Lebanon Zoning Board of Adjustment, there appeared Sylvia Dow on behalf of Visions for Creative Housing Solutions regarding 12 Green Street, Tax Map 92, Lot 131, Zoned R2. Applicant requests a special exception pursuant to Article 3, Section 309.2 of the zoning ordinance to permit a group residence. As a fact, are six in the draft decision and go on to conclusions of law. As a result of the above findings of fact and based on testimony given, application materials presented and supporting documents submitted, the board concludes the following with respect to the special exception criteria set forth in 813. One, the special exception is specifically authorized by 310.2 of the zoning ordinance. Two, there are no special conditions, requirements applicable to the proposed use. Three, there are no existing violations of zoning ordinance on the property that the granting a special exception would not remedy. Staff is not aware of any zoning ordinance violations on the property. The area will not be adversely affected. Five, no hazard or nuisance will be created. Existing or planned community facilities and services, including streets and highways, will not be adversely impacted. granting a special exception will not result in undue municipal expense. Eight, the proposed special exception will be developed in a matter compatible with the spirit and intent of the ordinance. Nine, the general welfare of the city will be protected. Decision, therefore be resolved, the Lebanon Zoning Board of Adjustment in this 21st day of September 2020 hereby grants the requested special exception as set forth above and per testimony plans and materials submitted and per the following conditions. One, a building permit and certificate of occupancy shall be obtained.
Ms. Vice Chair, it's Al Patterson, and I'll second the, second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from the board? Hearing none, I will take a roll call vote. Mr. Katz, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Mr. Patterson?
I vote yes.
Mr. Nash?
I vote yes.
Mr. Newlove?
I vote yes.
And I vote yes, it's unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good night.
Okay, moving on, we have another amended notice. This notice was amended and be noticed. This is in the matter of David Wong, the property owner, and Janet Wong, the applicant, at 23 Eldridge Street, Tax Map 77, Lot 190, Zoned R3. It's a request for A, a variance from Article 3, Section 309.2 of the zoning ordinance to convert an existing two-family dwelling to a four-unit multifamily dwelling, which is not a permitted use in the R3 district. B, a variance from Section 310.3 to allow density to exceed the- B, a variance from Section 310.3 to allow density to exceed the maximum permitted in the R3 district. And C, a variance from the section, from Section 607 to allow only four off-street parking spaces for the proposed multifamily dwelling, whereas a minimum, the minimum of six off-street parking spaces is required. Or in the alternative, a variance from Section 201.7 to allow parking spaces within the front yard, and a variance from the Appendix A definition of off-street parking space, which requires parking spaces to be independently accessible. Um, and for the purposes of voting, I will appoint Mr. McDonough on this one.
Thank you.
Ms. Mercer?
Yes.
This is Jeremy Katz. Uh, I was recused from the, uh, the last hearing on this, and I'm recusing myself for this hearing, so you'll need a second alternate.
Thank you, Mr. Katz, so I will also appoint Mr. Newlove, both of you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, is there anyone here representing the applicant?
Um, good evening, can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Jay Barrett, or for the record Frank J. Barrett Jr., I'm an architect.
Spell your name, please.
Uh, B-A-R-R-E-T-T. First name Frank, middle initial J, and, uh, that's junior.
Okay.
An architect, based in White River Junction. Do a lot of work in Lebanon. This past Friday, the Janet Wong asked if I would, uh, assist her with this application. Uh, it was on very, very short notice, and, uh, I really haven't had a chance to look at the application, other than just very, very briefly. I haven't had a chance to look at the property, uh, et cetera, et cetera. I do a lot of planning board and zoning board work, uh, but this was very short notice. So, to simply cut to the chase, um, I'm requesting that the board, um, uh, yeah, uh, move this hearing to a later date, which would allow us to be, uh, better prepared to be able to, um, you know, make a meaningful presentation to the board.
Okay, so you're asking for continuance?
Yes.
Go ahead.
You know, it's a, there are numerous variances here. Variances are, you know, um, you, you know, difficult in and of themselves. There are a variety of issues, and, uh, I say for whatever reason, uh, I only got involved in this as of about 3 o'clock, uh, Friday afternoon.
Okay, are you requesting a continuance to the October 5th meeting?
Uh, preferably longer, because any material that I put together would need to be submitted to the board. I don't know what the, what your schedule is specifically, uh, for that.
Mr. Corwin, um, were you aware of this, or does staff have any concerns about a continuance of this?
Well, let me, let me respond this way, if it were continued until the October 5th meeting, um, Mr. Barrett could have it at least until, um, you know, at least until, say, noon on Tuesday, um, Tuesday, September 29th, uh, which would give us time to get that material into, um, into the zoning board's October 5th packet. Um, you know, it certainly, we, we, we certainly understand, uh, the, the position Mr. Barrett's in. Um, on the other hand, we, this is a, a code enforcement matter that we'd like to try and keep, uh, moving forward as expeditiously as possible. So I don't know if, um, you know, I don't know if that, that, you know, that gives a little over a week, about a week to, to, uh, prepare, uh, the response to the five variance criteria. I don't know if that's, gives enough time or not.
I, preferably, I'd, I'd like to have more, to be honest with you. Uh, my plate is quite full. Um, I'm, I'm glad to be involved in this, and, you know, it's an interesting matter, but I could, I could do a better job with a little bit more time, to be perfectly honest with you. Uh, and I realize it is a code enforcement matter. I'm working with Janet on another piece of property to resolve, uh, code enforcement issues, and, um, and I think that's off to a good start. I think that we would be better served by trying to resolve the, the code issues that are on, at hand here on this property, uh, as opposed to, um, going down the route of, uh, uh, enforcement action, uh, which takes it, takes it out of the ZBA's hands, and basically puts it into the hands of, of court. Uh, I'm optimistic that with some time and, and, uh, you know, better assessing the situation, that we could at least have a meaningful, uh, presentation before the board. Maybe that doesn't produce a variance, but at least, um, you know, everyone can say that the best, the best effort was made. Um, and, uh, by virtue of, uh, my office being retained, uh, by Janet, I think that shows a willingness to try to get the issues resolved, to get them understood, to get them resolved. Um, you know, no one can predict what the ultimate decision of the board will be, but I think it's, it's trying to make some sense out of, um, you know, the hand of cards that we have here.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. At this point in time, I'll open it up to the board to see if they have any questions for you. Uh, Mr. Katz, so, sorry, you recused. Um, Mr. McDonough, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Newlove?
Uh, no questions.
Mr. Patterson?
Um, I don't know if, if, uh, Mr. Barrett can answer this, but it's my understanding, and maybe staff can better answer this. But it's my understanding that this has been going on for quite some time, and that there is a, and I, I, I think that the, the applicant, um, has had ample time to, um, prepare and, and understand the seriousness of this. And I, and I think it's only until the last meeting that, that we are now, that now you're, you're becoming involved, so I don't know. And I, I guess this question is more appropriate for staff, or when it's appropriate to ask staff that question, I would like to follow up on some more reference that.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Mr. Nash?
You know, while I'm disappointed with the delay on the part of the applicant, I, I think the city would be well-served. We have a quality professional that's going to address the criteria. Um, I think it's in a timely fashion for when he's been engaged, and I think the applicant and the city would be both well-served if we allow, uh, this little bit of extra time.
Thank you, Mr. Nash. Um, this is a public hearing, so I will also, uh, ask, is there anyone from the public on the line who would like to comment on this application, uh, specifically on the request to continue? Um, not so much on the application itself, since the board will be can, uh, first considering whether or not to continue this. So is there anyone from the public who would like to speak about the request for continuance?
And again, if you're on the phone, press star 6 to unmute.
No hands raised, Tim?
I, I, I don't see it. Uh, I do see one, Lawrence.
Go ahead.
Hi.
Yeah.
This is Ken Weeks. K-E-N-W-E-K-S. Um, this is my second time sitting in for this, uh, application for the, the change of the zone and, you know, the additions of what they're, they're looking to do. Um, I'm just wondering how much longer she's going to be given, as long as this has been going on. Um, I'm just one of the neighbors. Um, I'm sure the others, uh, which couldn't be here unfortunately, would have issues with this continuing as well.
Thank you, Mr. Weeks. We certainly appreciate that your concern. And we'll just, we'll take that up for discussion.
Thank you.
During the board discussion, thank you. Um, anyone else from the public? Or any indication, Tim?
I don't, I don't see any hands.
Okay. So, at this time, uh, I will not close the public hearing, but I'll turn it to the board. Is there a motion to continue? Anyone willing to make a motion to continue?
This is Dan Nash. I'll make a motion to continue to, it sounds like 12 October, would give the additional week of time.
Well, the, uh, the, it, this is Tim. The, um, the board's first meeting in October is October 5th, and then the board's second meeting is, uh, October 19th.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'll change it to October 19th.
Do we have a second?
This is Dave Newlove, I'll second it.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Patterson, did you want to just have some discussion here?
Yeah, I have a question for staff, please.
Go ahead.
Um, Mr. Corwin, in the last meeting, we, we spoke, um, I know that, that you raised some concerns about timeliness, and this has been going on for a while. And, and, and I remember that we wanted to move, not we, but you would appreciate it to see this move forward, and you cited some reasons for that. Um, and also, you know, in light of, uh, we never really kind of understood what prolonging this without resolving it would, would do, and I wondered if you could better explain those two things for me.
Well, um, for one thing, there are, it, it, it's my understanding, there are rather serious building code and life safety issues, uh, that are, that are at stake here. And so, um, the longer, you know, not, not, notwithstanding the, the very fair points, uh, Mr. Barrett raised, um, but to answer your question, Mr. Patterson, the longer this is, uh, this is delayed, the longer, um, that the, uh, building and life safety issues go unresolved. Um, and so, um, and so I think, I think that's, I mean, I think that's what, what's at stake. Um, you know, there's just, there's just sort of a general concern that, that, that these matters are lingering well beyond, uh, the time that they, that they should be. But, but again, Mr. Barrett certainly makes, makes fair points.
Okay, um, Ms. Vice Chair, can I make a comment?
Yes.
Um, based, based on that, and one of my reasons was because I, I thought some of them might be life sa- safety, I think we should be, as a board, extremely cautious of granting a continuation on anything that has not been addressed, or there's been a lack of effort to address it, even there was a hearing, um, the, the, they, they should have known, especially if you're in that business, for life safety issues, that it is serious, and someone should have been brought on early on if they didn't understand the process. I think by allowing this to go on, we're going into the cold season where heat is being used, and the chances of fires are greater. I don't know if the, the issues are relative to fire safety issues, um, but if they are, we're running into a more of a high-risk season. I'm not inclined to support continuing this. Um, I'm inclined to do something where the city can make a definitive determination in regards to enforcement of what they're going to do to protect the lives of those that live there.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Any, any other discussions from the board?
Yeah, just do that.
If not, I will do a roll call vote, and we're voting to continue this hearing to October 19th. Uh, Mr. Nash, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Patterson, how do you vote?
I vote no.
Mr. Newlove, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Mr. McDonough, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
And I vote yes, so it's four to one. Motion passes. Okay, Mr. Barrett, we will see you on October 19th.
Thank you very much for your patience and understanding.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, good night. Moving on to new public hearings, uh, the next one is in the matter of Alice and Adam Dansby, 32 West Street, Tax Map 91, Lot 74, Zoned R3. And the applicants intend to remove the existing home and to build a new home closer to Child Street. So they request a variance, am I missing a line? Request a variance. Request is for a variance pursuant to Article 3, Section 310.3 of the zoning ordinance to build a dwelling 10 feet from the side property line shared with 10, 10 Child Street, Tax Map 91, Lot 79, where a minimum yard, uh, setback of 15 feet is required. Are the applicants present? Do we have the Dansbys here, Tim?
I, I don't see, I don't see them.
Is there anyone here for the applicant, um, if you are here?
Y- yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't see anyone.
Yourself? Hmm.
Um.
That's unfortunate.
I'll have to check in with them, um.
Well, we can continue this because it has to be continued anyway.
Right, exactly.
It's Al Patterson. Can I, should we make a motion for that?
Yes.
I'll make a motion. You want me to make it now, or wait?
Please, please go ahead. I, unless anybody has any objections, we'll make a motion because there's no, uh, if we don't have the applicants on the line and we have to continue it anyway, we might as well go ahead and continue it.
Ms. Mercer, who's voting on this?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, for this one, I will have Mr. Newlove vote on this one.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Patterson?
So I make a motion, we continue the Alice and Adam Dansby to October 5th hearing?
Do we have a second?
I second it, it's Dave Newlove.
Thank you, Mr. Newlove. All right, voting, Mr. Katz, how do you vote?
Vote yes.
Mr. Nash?
Vote yes.
Mr. Newlove?
I vote yes.
Mr. Patterson?
I vote yes.
And I vote yes, five to zero, unanimous. Okay. Um, so I think at this point in time, we should have, uh, somebody move to extend the meeting time. Would you, should we do that now, or should we go ahead and start the next hearing?
I can, I can make a motion that in the event the meeting, um, it is going to exceed past 10 o'clock, that we do so.
Past 9 o'clock, you mean?
I mean, past 9 o'clock, sorry.
I'm not likely to vote for the other one. Okay.
2100, to be clear.
Do we have a, do we have a second on that motion?
I'm confused. I thought our normal meeting time did go to 10.
Yes, it does.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
Should we, should we take a break before we hear the next application?
I agree to a five-minute break.
A five-minute break would be much appreciated.
Five-minute break, everybody back on at 8:55, please. It's actually a seven-minute break.
You're being generous, thank you.
Yes, all right, we'll take a fi- a recess until 8:55 PM.
You got enough to share with all of us, Paul? Not supposed to eat unless you've got enough to share.
I do.
Is that ice cream?
No, cookies.
Okay, it's 8:55. Do we have all the board members back? Mr. Nash? Is he present?
Yes.
Mr. Katz?
I'm here.
And I see Mr. McDonough and Mr. Newlove. Mr. Patterson?
Present.
Okay. Tim, are you back?
Yes, ma'am.
And Ms. Billings, are you back?
Never got off my chair, but I sure could use a cookie.
Can't we all? All right, I have a question for staff, so we'll resume the meeting now and come back out of recess. Mr. Corwin, am I reading the next two hearings as one, or are we doing these separately?
It's, that's a, that's a good question. It's how you'd like to proceed. I mean, we, we staff sees this, and I think, I think, I think these are two separate matters from a code standpoint. And I think it probably makes sense to treat them differently. They're already a little confusing.
All right, so I'll just start with the first one. So the next new public hearing is in the matter of Cody Swenson and Samantha Medina, 397 Dartmouth College Highway, Tax Map 111, Lot 9, Zoned RL2. A special exception was granted in 2009 pursuant to Article 7, Section 702.1 and 702.5 of the zoning ordinance to operate a contractor's yard. And the applicants are requesting an amendment to the special exception approval to eliminate or modify the conditions of approval. Are there, are the applicants present? If you are on the phone?
Yes.
Yes, we are here.
Okay, could you please state your names and spell your names for the record, please?
Samantha Medina, last name is M-E-D-I-N-A.
Cody Swenson.
Thank you. So go ahead and please describe to us what you're asking for.
So I guess we're under the understanding that the last time we came in front of the board and asked for some special expectations, we were granted them. Am I not under the understanding that things have been taken back and set back to what was before we got those special expectations?
So you were given a special exception, and it had conditions that you were supposed to meet. And let me find your packet here. So you're in your application packet here. There were several conditions of approval. And my understanding of the application packet is that you are requesting to amend the approval and remove, is it all of the conditions, Tim, or is it just, are there other ones that are listed than what's listed here in the application?
Would it help if I just gave a brief?
Yes, please.
Background. The, the, there are, there are, just by, just quick explanation, there are two uses on the property. On the, on the western end of the property, there is a non-conforming produce stand slash retail use, and that is the subject of the next application, Agenda Item 4C. The subject of this application is the, is the use at the eastern end of the property, and that is a use, it is a non-conforming contractor's yard use that was, that was originally approved in 2009 by the zoning board by special exception with a somewhat large number of conditions that needed to be adhered to. In 2017, a prospective purchaser of the property obtained an amendment to that 2009 special exception approval to remove some of the conditions that were imposed in 2009. That purchase never, I guess fell through, or didn't happen. And then about a year later, the applicants appeared before U.S. prospective purchasers of the property and likewise sought to amend or remove a handful of conditions associated with the 2009 approval. And so, that, that special exception in 2019 was granted, and as granted, the notice of decision was intended to replace, it was intended to replace the 2009 special exception, but it was written much, it was very similar, it was written in the same way, except with the conditions modified as requested by, by the applicant. There were some additional conditions of approval that were, that were somewhat unique to the, to the 2018 notice of decision. One of those was that the applicant was to provide a landscaping plan, hold on one second, I got, let's me in the meeting here. The applicant was to provide a landscaping plan to staff within, within one year of obtaining their special exception. And so they obtained the special exception in October, I think I'm getting my dates here correct. In October of 2018, they failed to provide a landscaping plan per the zoning board's conditions of approval by October of 2019. And so, per the conditions, per the, per the black and white verbiage that was contained in the conditions of approval, the variance was deemed void, excuse me, the special exception was deemed void. Again, that was almost a year ago. And so, since then, we, staff has been working, trying to get the applicants to come back before the zoning board for, for a new special exception approval, because the one that had been granted in 2018, October 2018, was automatically void for failure to comply with the conditions that were imposed as part of that 2018 approval. And so, the applicant has submitted their application, and it is a little unclear as to exactly what they're asking, so staff has tried to intuit what it is that they, that, what can, so, sorry, let me back up for a second. So that, because the 2018 notice, special exception was deemed void, instead, what happened is that the 2009 approval now becomes the governing approval, the applicable approval, that 2009 special exception still lives, and if you will, and the applicant is now, is now required to meet the conditions of that 2009 approval. And so, and so, staff had received several complaints about the failure to meet those 2009 conditions of approval, and we conducted our own, our own, you know, investigation from the highway in late April, and over the winter, and then again in late April, and found that there were several conditions of that 2009 special exception approval that were not, that were not being met. And so, the city, the city's attorney contacted the applicants to explain those violations of the 2009 special exception approval. And the option, as is almost always the case, is to either A, comply, or B, apply to the zoning board for relief. In this case, that relief is amending the 2009 special exception, and so that's, that was the path chosen here. And that's fine, that's, that, the applicant was given that, that opportunity. The more difficult part was, again, trying to discern what it is exactly that needs to be amended from the 2009 approval to, so that it will allow the applicants to utilize the property in a way that they're actually utilizing it. And so, and so I've, on page three of the staff memo, I've deduced what it is that would need to be amended, you know, changed from the 2009 approval, again, in order to allow the applicants to continue using the property the way that they are. This is not, just to keep in mind, this is not an administrative appeal. There's no, there's no question that the special exception is void, and nor is it, nor is it an opportunity to, it's not necessarily an opportunity or reason to argue whether certain conditions are met or not met. The fact that there was a violation was not appealed, that's not before the board today. Today's, or this, this application is an opportunity for the applicant to, to, for everyone to be clear about what it is that, that, how it is that the contractor's yard is used, whether the 2009 approval is still appropriate for that use, and if not, whether there is reason for the board to amend those 2009 conditions, again, to allow the applicant to use the property in the way that they are in fact using it, which is not consistent, or which hasn't, hasn't been consistently consistent with the, with the requirements of the 2009 special exception approval.
Thank you, Tim. Mr. Swenson, Ms. Medina, is that, do you understand everything that Tim just went through in relation to your property?
Yes.
Okay, so the special exception that was granted to you in 2018 is void.
Yep.
And you are currently operating under the special exception that was granted in 2009, but it has several conditions attached to it that you, that you need to be following, or need to have amended.
So can, can I talk, or are we good?
Yes, go ahead.
Obviously, we want what we had asked for in the 2018 meeting. Going through, I mean, do you want me to just go through the violations and speak on them, or?
So I want you to go through the conditions of the 2009 special exception and clarify what you're asking for.
Okay, hold on one second, let me pull it up.
We've got to go all the way back to 2009. Tim, maybe we should just put them on the screen.
Yes, that's, that's exactly what I was thinking. Hold on one second.
Now I'm looking for the 2009 ones.
So Tim's pulling them up on the screen, if you can see the screen.
There we go.
All right, the property contains two principal uses.
So the first one, the building will remain a non-heated, unoccupied storage building.
So it's still not heated, there were wood stoves when we first got in there. There's honestly no proper piping on the building to even run the wood stoves. As far as that whole thing goes, I mean, you can tell by how much we didn't cowl it, we're not really up there in the winter, it hasn't been heated, so.
So you're not asking for that one to be changed?
What was that?
You're not asking for a change to that first condition?
I mean, if we could have them heated, we would continue to hook them up and put the proper piping if it's allowed, but they have not been heated yet.
Tim, is that in your list of requests to change that?
Yes, I had, I had identified that as something that they may want to consider asking for a change.
So removal of the heating. Okay, the second one, the entire developed portion of the property will comply with the city's commercial landscaping ordinance as subdividing the property has not occurred, other than for bounds of contractor's yard. Is this one in your, in the application, Tim?
Yes.
To remove that?
Yes.
Third, if the owner intends to isolate the access to either side of property as suggested on supplemental site plan, that proper permits be obtained for driveway modifications. Have you changed the driveways at all?
No.
No.
Do you plan to change the driveways at all?
No.
Tim, is that one in the application?
It isn't, although I, I, I think the abutters are going to want to address that one, but it's not, it is not in the list that I have.
Okay. Sure, we'll come back to that one then. Number four, at no time will storage of box trailers or shipping Number four, at no time will storage of box trailers or shipping containers be permitted. I believe that one is in the list, and you're asking for that to be removed, correct?
Yes, to store a box trailer too. Yes.
Number five, no vehicle maintenance will occur on site.
When we were at the original meeting, we had asked if we could work on our own equipment that we keep stored there. Not on anybody else's or performing, you know, tasks for money or anything.
That one would need to be removed. Okay.
Yes.
Number six, all vehicles and towable trailers to maintain current registration and roadworthiness. Do you have any vehicles, abandoned vehicles on the property, vehicles without registrations?
Nope, right now we have one trailer on the property, and we do have the registration.
So that can stay?
Yes.
All outside storage is to conform to the boundaries set forth in the supplemental site plan submitted to the board. And said storage to be screened by a six-foot-high privacy fence.
Yeah, that's.
We got an eight-foot-high privacy fence.
That's true.
For around all of your outside storage?
Yeah, it's just not as it's just not what we originally wanted it to be. It was supposed to be wood, but the wind is just. Crazy up there, so we bought black privacy fencing, which is that's exactly what it's called, privacy fencing. We put it up. They said it weren't really dark enough, so we put a layer on the inside too. So it's layered. On the two sides that are. You're able to see one side is against the building, which is the building's there, and in the back there is none, but there it's on the front and the side. Double line.
Okay, so we can keep that restriction in here. You're not requesting to let me let me clarify my question. Are you requesting for that to be removed?
No.
No.
Okay. Number eight, no storage of a construction. Or demolition dumpsters will be allowed on site. Are you requesting?
No, we have no dumpsters or anything. That's all right.
Okay. Number nine, no porta-potties will be permitted at the site. It's it's to be a non-occupied facility.
That we had in the original meeting. Set that we could have, because obviously there's no septic up there. We need some way to go to the bathroom, being in a business all day.
Okay, and number 10. We don't need to ask you about that. Operating hours. Number 11, operating hours to be limited between 6:30 a.m. and 8:30 p.m.
Yeah, we would like to keep it that. It was changed.
To 6:30 to 6:30, but if we could have a 6:30 to 8:30, I mean, it would be wonderful.
In in the summer, you have to be able to work past 6:30. It's it's, you know, it's light till nine o'clock, and. If we have to use the Bobcat to unload something, you know, we don't want to be in violation because somebody comes at seven o'clock and we need to use the Bobcat.
Okay. Is there anything else you would like to present to the board at this time? Otherwise, I will allow the board to ask questions.
What, Ms. Mercer?
Yes.
This is Tim. There are some findings of fact that are that sort of effectively act as conditions of approval. And those would be. I'm a page of the staff memo.
Yeah.
Those are on also on page three or four of the staff memo random. It's the first three bullet points. These are findings of fact, six, seven, and nine.
I'm not seeing the same. I'm looking at today's packet. Packet for today's meeting.
Yeah, the the four-page memo.
Staff memo. Want to page three, you said?
Yeah.
I see proposal with a bunch of bullets ordinance. Okay.
Yeah, so the first three bullets.
The first three bullets. Okay, thank you. Yes, we talked about removing the condition. Oh. They said that they don't have. Her finding effect six. So when I just asked that question, they said that they don't have. Or they would like to. We need to remove that. Okay. So removing the condition, limiting storage to small enclosed pickup towable trailers and a box trailer. Tim, is that the that's from? Yeah, I mentioned that though on the list. I guess I'm not sure. I I'm confused as to what.
There are. We we went through the we started with the conditions of approval from the 2009 decision, which which makes sense. And so so we went through all all 11 of those. But if you but if you back up to the 2009 findings of fact.
Ah, okay.
There are statements that were made that that are effectively conditions of approval, because that's what the applicant represented the use would be. And so the ones that I think are are at issue. Are six, seven, and nine.
Okay, so finding a fact six was the applicant stated he plans to to store two small enclosed pickup towable trailers and a box trailer. And so we would need to. Well, they're they're asking to remove the condition there, so you would want to remove the finding of fact as well.
Right, I mean, it will. New findings of fact will have to be crafted.
Correct.
And so that this one wouldn't. Something like this would be wouldn't be included. There would be no limitation.
Okay. Mr. Swenson and Ms. Medina. They also testified in 2009 that there would be no work performed other than loading and unloading material. Can you describe the work that's being performed there at the contractor's yard?
To be honest with you, we really use it for storage on a few occasions so far. Cody has used it. To work on its own equipment, whether he was changing the brakes on his truck or what have you. We have slightly started to set up, like we had told you guys in the original meeting, a wood shop in there. We have not yet completed it just due to all the work that has been done and getting done up there. We'd still like to keep the same permission from you guys and having that stuff. I mean, we haven't made it. Quite there yet, but other than that, we've worked on a few of Cody's things and split wood that I use at the farm stand.
I still store. I still have like my tools, like I have my trail like in the contractor's yard as well. I. Run a landscaping business, and I have my enclosed trailer up there with all my tool, all my like lawn. Leaf blowers, weed whackers, my chainsaws, you know, that's what I keep in my trailer, and I that's like what I use. I mean. I don't have a lot of tools. I'm not like Tom Jealousy where he had all the stuff coming in and out. I just use it to keep my stuff for my little for my business. That's where I park all my stuff. Like, I'll have my lawnmower in the garage, in the barn, you know, that's where I put my stuff up for my business.
Okay. And we had also. Discussed this at your last hearing, but are you parking trucks there overnight?
We had the international up there, and for a while we did have our boom truck up there, so we asked.
Okay, so that would be removed as a finding. Okay, thank you, Tim. Does that cover what you were?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay, is there anything else you'd like to tell us about this application before we go to questions from the board?
Is that on me?
Yes.
I would just like to touch base on, obviously, I'm sure you guys are going to kind of go through the complaints and talking about everything. Obviously, since we've gotten the place, I mean, we cleaned it up a lot. We've taken a whole 12 or so loads of. Garbage and trash and stuff that have been left up there. Obviously, at this point, I think we thought we'd be a little bit further along in the project, and we just haven't quite made it there yet. It doesn't mean that all the things we want to do, like make it prettier and plant landscape, and hopefully find a way to maybe have a prettier fence won't eventually happen. But we obviously just haven't quite made it there.
Okay, thank you. I'll go over to the board now. And for the purposes of voting, Mr. McDonough, I will appoint you to this one. If I didn't do that already. Questions from the board. Mr. Nash, would you like to start?
Sure. Is the contractor's yard now being used as an accessory use to the produce stand? I'm confused as to. Why they're two separate uses.
That's a question for you. Mr. Swenson, Ms. Medina.
No, the farm stand is not being used as two accessory. I mean, the farm stand's a farm stand, and my side is my side. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Nash. Mr. Patterson. You are, we cannot hear you, Mr. Patterson.
Well, you hear me now.
Yes.
I have questions, but if we, I mean, my questions are relative to. The delay and the lack of responsiveness to this to the complaints and the. The, you know, the things that the city had to do to even get us to this date, and I guess. If that's not appropriate now, let me know when it is, because I think we we clearly have many violations. And they have not been addressed, and and they haven't been addressed in a timely manner, and we got several complaints and. And even even during that, it caused, you know, we had to get the city's attorney involved, which causes taxpayers' money, which is a burden on the on the city, so. I'm I'm concerned about several things.
I think you can go ahead and answer those, ask those questions, Mr. Patterson, because it. I think it'll factor into the board's decision later. We can't ignore the fact of everything that's gone on, so please answer, ask your questions.
Okay, the question is to both for either. Ms. Medina or Mr. Swanson to answer. You can either answer, but the city has. Had to hire an attorney to get you to this point to even to even communicate with us in regards to the violations. And I'm less than inclined to understand how you are going to now suddenly comply. And be a good neighbor to those who are are clearly not happy with the the lack of. Doing what you said you're going to. That's my first question. I don't know. What you can say to that. Secondly, is. In the event that, you know, I've been looking into it, but in the event that there is a significant amount of attorney fees. Based on this, are you willing to tell the city you were reimbursing for those unnecessary fees?
Before you answer that, I just want to go over to Mr. Corwin. Is that a question that the board can really ask the applicants? Because it's not, is it? Does that fall within the board's purview?
It's simply a question. I'm not, you know, it's not a condition. I'm not. I I asked a question as as a good. Member of the community if they've unduly caused financial hardship to the taxpayers.
I understand the question, but I I would like to know. From Mr. Corwin, if if that's too far outside of the board's purview. Did we lose Mr. Corwin?
Sorry, I began speaking. I was muted. It's it's my understanding that attorneys attorneys fees are recoverable. When when pursuing a code enforcement action under 67617, RSA 67617, but. The the exact extent of the city's ability to recover those attorney's fees is not exactly clear exactly clear. I did email. The city's attorney, the city attorney this afternoon to ask that very question. Whether whether the fees incurred so far by the city's attorney and the city's attorney in this matter. Could be recoverable under under that statute. But 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 that statute is is, you know, applies to to court actions, so it would. You know, there I don't believe there's a way for the city to. Require repayment of of attorney fees outside of that statute, and that statute. That I cited is is relates to seeking enforcement and penalties through the Superior Court.
This is Dan Nash. I guess then, under the special exception finding, we can say that this did cause an undue municipal expense and.
Mr. Patterson, based on Mr. Corwin's answer, do you? Do you want to continue with your two questions, or do you want to rephrase them at all?
No, I I still would like an answer. I think that. You know, I I still think the answer was that, you know. It doesn't matter the avenue to which we have to recoup it. If we can't do it here. You know, that's like Mr. Nash said, we can we can always consider other avenues.
All right, so repeat your two questions, and then I'll ask the applicants to answer them.
Since. You know, the conditions, we've had, there's several conditions. A lot of them were not met prior to this. I'm wondering. What what are they? What explanation do they have other than? I mean, I heard we didn't get to them. We tried to do them. We hauled away 10 loads, and that should be, you know, we should be happy with that, but. I mean, there were certain conditions that needed to be met in a timely manner. We gave them an ample, but gave them a year to do it. They weren't met. And I'm wondering. Why should we believe they're going to be met now if we just prolong it? And, you know, I'm thinking of. The conversation we had about being a good neighbor. And clearly, we have neighbors that are not happy with with what's going on there, and and. I think they those concerns certainly need to be addressed, so my question is to explain for them to explain that.
Ms. Medina, Mr. Swenson?
Um, yes, so since our last meeting in 2018. And Tim and I have spoke about it when it all first really happened. We did hand in something to what I thought was what you guys were looking for, that I considered a landscape plan. Where I had provided aerial view pictures and descriptions. It was later obviously discovered that that's not what you guys were looking for, and that's kind of how everything got. Set backwards in the first place. It's not that I didn't try to hand in anything. We did, and it's just not what you guys were looking for. Obviously, I understand that now. I do feel. That there was a bit of a miscommunication. Since that, I mean, I'm not saying, oh, we've just hauled away trash and this and that for no reason. I mean. We're obviously turning this property, in my opinion, in a good direction. It's. Really come a long way. We haven't stopped cleaning things up, leveling things out, hauling trash. I mean. And my honest feeling, I mean, we're. It's coming to get there. It's just, I don't know what more we can do, to be quite frank with you.
And I got one. I got one question I'd like to ask as well. I guess when we bought this property or these properties together as two separate properties. One one property, two separate exceptions. We were told that, you know, that we were getting a commercial piece of property, a commercial business. Over on the left side that was a farm stand slash retail store. And I guess we were never really. Clear on or had a clarification of what we can and can't do at that particular location. You know, nobody's ever really said to us what you explained what you can and can't do at a retail store. I mean, everything we've looked up. You know, we are abiding by what a normal retail store would do or a farm stand, which were more or less a farm a farm stand. But we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. On the other side, on the on my side. I mean, it's a contractor's yard, and that's that's what it's it gets used for. And as for landscape. On Sam's side, the farm stand side, she has done tremendous amounts of landscaping. Now, on my side, on the fence, on the my side, we put fencing all around there. We put new signs up. We put a thing around the big sign. Now, I haven't done very much landscaping on my side, but I've also keep the grass mode, and I. Cut the bushes all down that were all around that split rail fence that is along the side of the building, and I did clean it up. You know, I mean, it might not have been to what I guess everybody expected it to be, but it's way better than what it was.
Mr. Corwin, did you want to address that question?
I I did want to just respond very quickly as an aside about the signs. The signs were installed without a sign permit, and the applicants have been told repeatedly. To to submit a sign permit application. and the applicants have been told repeatedly to, to submit a sign permit application for what they've installed. We have not received a permit, application to date. And I don't know that what they've installed complies with the zoning laws. I don't believe, I don't believe that it does. But in terms of responding to the question, what, what was the original question?
The assertion was that nobody's ever told them what they're allowed to do with the commercial property, which I guess is the next application. So maybe we should wait for that question there.
Sorry, I, I muted myself again. I, I do think that's, that that relates to the, to the next application.
Okay, okay. Mr. Patterson, do you have any additional questions?
Not at this time.
Okay, um, let's see, I, Mr. Nash, you went, right?
Yes, I did.
Okay, Mr. Katz, do you have questions?
So, yeah, first, I, I just have a question for Mr. Corwin, actually, to start off. I'm trying to piece this together. And this is a property in the RL two district that received a special exception to operate a contractor's yard. But I'm looking at the current ordinance and the RL two district only allows by special exception a home-based contractor's yard and there's not a home here. So is this, is this a use that's even allowed by special exception now? I mean, is, is this a non-conforming use that's getting a special exception to change the non-conforming use?
I, I, I think that's, I think that was the two thousand nine special exception approval. It was to change one non-conforming use to another. I, I don't, I don't recall off the top of my head what the, what, what the non-conforming use was in two thousand nine. I'm sure the applicants would be able to, well, actually, I'm sorry, take that back. In the two thousand nine notice of decision, it says the existing non-conforming use was a well-drilling business which operated until April thirtieth, two thousand seven. And so in two thousand nine, there was a special exception to change one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use and that other non-conforming use was a contractor's yard.
Okay, but like, the, the way that I see it, and I just wanted you to tell me whether, because I, I see this as, this is now, it's, it was changed into a lawful, non-conforming contractor's yard by virtue of the two thousand nine special exception. And really, this special exception is asking to change it into a lawful, non-conforming contractor's yard with fewer restrictions. I mean, isn't it just a, a, a change from one non-conforming use to another?
It, 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 it could be framed that way. The way that, the way that it's framed in the hearing notice, I believe, is, is, is as an amendment to the two thousand nine special exception. But you're right, it could, and maybe, and maybe that's more appropriate because it's, it's, it's not clear exactly how this, this, what this, how this actually is being used. It sounds more like a, just like a storage yard. But I think, but if it is indeed a contractor's yard, then I think it could be framed either way. I, 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 again, either as an amendment to the two thousand nine special exception approval as, as set forth in the hearing notice or, or yes, as, as just a, a different, a different non-conforming use, which would be, which would be a special exception under seven oh two point one, or whatever it is. I, I, I think it could be either.
Yeah, because I, I, I don't see how we could do what's, what's being asked here because this is, you know, it, it's not a conforming use. We're not looking at a special, we're, we're not looking at a use that's allowed by special exception in the first place there. The special exception that was granted was to create a new non-conformity that was less non-conforming than the prior one. And it seems to me that the, the burden here is on the applicant to prove that their proposed contractor yard with very few restrictions is less non, could equal to or less non-conforming than the contractor's yard with a lot of restrictions that was allowed in two thousand and nine.
Huh, that's a very, that's a very interesting way of looking. I think it's very interesting. You might, you might be right.
Any further questions, Mr. Katz?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McDonough, questions?
Thank you. This is for, a question for Tim on page four of the package that's put together for tonight, four thirty-nine. It's titled Proposal.
Sorry, just looking through here. Yes.
First page of the staff memorandum. So those eight bullet points. Are you saying in summary, in essence, that's, those are the conditions that were established in two thousand nine that the applicants tonight are asking to have, to be released from?
I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying is that, based on how staff has observed the property actually being used, since, since their, their approval was obtained in two thousand and eighteen, these are the conditions that would need to be removed from that two thousand nine special exception approval in order to satisfy the remaining conditions of approval and the, the remaining aspects of that, of that two thousand nine approval.
And, and the both eight bullet points on the proposal paragraph, do they mirror the non-compliance of violations that the applicants are facing?
Yes.
Are there more violations in addition to what those eight points are?
With respect to the contractor's yard?
Yes.
Are, are there more zoning violations?
Yes.
There is, yes, there's the, there is the sign ordinance violation. A permit is needed for all new signs that were, that were installed. Go back through the, I think in, in Attorney Christine Fillmore's May fourteenth letter, the contractor's yard violations are noted pages one, two. Okay, sorry, I'm just refreshing my memory. The, the, the signs is the only, is the only other violation that we're aware of with respect to the contractor's yard use specifically. So then again, then again, it did, we, we also observed that there is a stovepipe suggesting that the building is, is heated, in which case that would be a violation of, of the city's building code since no building permit was obtained.
So in essence, all but the signage issue would be resolved if the special acceptance, well, violation would be resolved if the, if the applicant's petition is granted.
Yes.
Yes, nothing further, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonough. Mr. Newlove, do you have any questions?
Not, not at this point, I do not.
And I don't either. Ms. Medina and Mr. Swenson, do you have any, I'm going to open it up to the public for comments. Do you have anything else you want to provide to the board before I do that with this application?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
I'd like to address the, the sign situation. I guess I'm a little confused on the sign situation. The sign, the frame that is there now is the frame that was there when I bought the place. The board that my vinyl sticker is on is the same size, same frame, literally the same thing. I just put a vinyl sticker right over the same exact size sign that was already there. Underneath it is Love Nest Farm sign, um, sorry, farm stand sign. So I, just so I understand, I need to get a permit to put a new face on the same exact size sign because the size of it hasn't changed.
All new signs require a sign permit.
Okay.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, at this time, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak about this application? If so, please identify yourself, spell your name and state your interest in this application.
We, we have the Wadleys and Childs and looks like they're ready to speak.
Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Linda Wadley. Last name is spelled W A D L E I G H. First name Linda, L I N D A. I just wanted to make some comments. If you read the packets that was submitted for this meeting, I believe I'm probably the neighbor that, of all the complaining. First and foremost, I just want to, you know, touch base on the, on the fence. The Childs, myself and my husband, attended the first meeting where this was brought forth and the picture that Samantha showed us of the fence that they were planning on putting up was, was a nice fence and we were impressed and happy with it. That was not what happened. Instead, they hung the construction mesh on a existing chain link fence. It, it's just, it's not what we expected. It, it makes it look more or less like an ongoing construction project over there. My husband and I went over and met with Samantha at the end of June to discuss some options and one of them was possibly putting up a raised garden that around the outside of the fence and planting pitches that would, you know, conceal what was behind the chain link fence. She seemed open to that and that would also improve the look on the farm stand side. Samantha's biggest issue was thinking that the wind in this area would break apart a wooden fence. She did show us a picture of a, like a staggered wooden fence as she was contemplating. And my husband, at that point, indicated he could bring home some poles to frame it up for them. And, and of course, no, he was, he did bring some over and drop them off and the poles are free of charge to them. And he would continue bringing them over until, you know, they were done with that part of it. And it was just kind of going to be an ongoing thing where once they used what was dropped off, more would be brought over. So, you know, we are trying to help them with that part of it. We're trying to meet them halfway. The poles are, like I said, free of charge to them, so that should help with the cost of putting up a new fence. That, that's one of our biggest issues. As far as what is stored over there, we're not really on board with keeping stuff over, any kind of vehicle over there that's not roadworthy. Could be registered and inspected so that things don't just start piling up over there that need work. You know, we, we understand they want to do maintenance to their own vehicles, which is fine. They wouldn't have issue with that. We just don't want it to turn into a, a mechanical garage where, you know, things get tinkered on that don't belong to their businesses. One of the other things touched on in the application was the stuff in the storage, what they're storing over there. Oh, actually, it was the selling vehicles outside the fence. And by all means, they have every right to sell their own vehicles, you know, that belong to their business outside the fence. They shouldn't be allowed to sit for months at a time, though. That's, that's, that kind of indicates first, it probably isn't going to sell. And second, it just, you know, there's no piles up on it and it's just kind of an eyesore. And yeah, we do on occasion put a vehicle down at the bottom of our, our driveway for sale, but it's usually because we purchased a new one and we're trying to sell the old one. We sit it far enough up off the road so it doesn't obstruct our view of oncoming traffic. The other concern about the vehicles being outside the fence across the street is that they are close to the road and people pulling out of the farm stand could have their vision blocked to oncoming traffic. That's for the heating part of the building. As Samantha mentioned, they're not really there in the wintertime, so I guess that's kind of a moot point. We did see protruding pipe from the side of the building and that's what sparked our concern about wood stove being hooked up over there. So, final note, I guess, the landscaping. We don't feel that the business should be unlike any other business in Lebanon and should have landscaping done, especially if it's viewable to the public. One of our initial complaints before Samantha and Cody took over was that there was a lot of overgrown weeds, grass, what have you. And that was of degree just over, you know, just, just piled up around the property. So, that being said, that's just, you know, where we've come from as far as the contractor's yard goes. We'd like to, you know, I don't really know what the business is that's being, being held out of there or run out of there. But we're willing to work with them. It just, you know, just, we'd like to see some stuff go forward and, or go in a different direction than what it's been going in, which is not going too fast. Or I guess I shouldn't say too fast. She did say that they, you know, they need some more time, but, and we don't really want, we've brought this up before and Samantha and I and Charlie talked about it as far as recreation vehicles being stored over there. It's, it's really not that kind of a lot, it's a contractor's lot. So that's, all this stuff has been discussed before, I just wanted to touch base on it again.
Thank you. Any questions from the board for this abutter? And is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak about the contractor's yard?
Yes, please. This is the other abutter. My name is Mary Lou Childs. First name is M A R I L O U. Last name Childs, C H I L D S.
Go ahead.
Some additional comments on the contractor's yard. I'm seeing statements that the building was not heated through the winter, the contractor's yard. Yet unfortunately, I've witnessed black smoke coming from the side of the building during the wintertime. So it has been used. We witnessed it at night, home is closer to the road and, and I can smell and see the smoke from my home. Up until two weeks ago, there were snowmobiles. I'm not sure what the landscaping business use of snowmobiles may be. I believe the lawn was finally mowed within the past month. Now, we have a beautiful farm stand and Sammy has done a beautiful job with it. And we have Cody as a landscaper. One would think maybe you might mow the lawn more than once during the summertime. This, this is your area of business and I understand you're busy and I understand it's been a rough year all around. But these are the things that make your property attractive to others. I have seen no, no evidence of a landscaping service being run out of that contractor's yard. I've never seen a lawnmower over there. I've never seen any equipment that looks to be any part of a landscaping business within that area. There's some trailers over there. There's been many trailers in and out of that property since October of twenty eighteen, including food trucks. We'll get into that with the other side of the property as well. But I'd really like evidence of a business, a landscaping business that this yard is supporting. I, I see none. I've seen loads of logs being dropped off there. Not sure what that is for landscaping business. Again, I will say, and we've heard this over and over since this meeting started at seven o'clock, things have gone on for too long. Continuances are allowed. There's no follow-up by the city, unfortunately, on the different violations and expectations on properties throughout the city. It's incredibly disappointing to be a lifelong resident here and see that this is how the city is handling or not such circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Lyndon Reagan. I just want to say that I think it's wrong of the city to rely on property owners that have bought property that restrictions or conditions have been placed on, especially when there's been a deadline put on them, to go to the city about it versus the city sending somebody out to say, this was supposed to be done by this date, we're just going to check and make sure you're in compliance. Because all you're doing by having property owners get involved is creating a hostile working, a hostile environment for us. It's, it's not fun.
Excuse me, this is Linda Billings. Could you please tell me who was just speaking again, your name and spelling it?
Linda Wadley, W A D L E I G H.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Comment by Mary Lou Childs. We've been Comment by Mary Lou Childs. We've been. Mary Lou, M A R I L O U, Childs, C H I L D S. We have been told that if we don't complain, then nothing will be done. That there is no consequences by the city unless they are alerted to complaints, basically. So we complain and complain and complain as Sammy put it. And here we stand.
Are there any questions from the board for either of these butters? Hearing none. Are there, is there anyone else from the public, uh, Tim, on the line to speak?
Not, not that I'm aware for this application.
Okay. Um, so this hearing will be continued, it has to be continued to the next meeting because of COVID. As Tim read at the beginning of the meeting, um, that's how we've been doing everything since April, I would say. Um, go ahead.
Mr. Sorry, this is Tim. Is, is there, is there any additional information? Um, that the board thinks they need from the applicant?
I was going to go to the, to the board.
Okay.
Next here, um, to talk about the continuation. So we can discuss that in that piece of it. Um, so, so we will go, so, so now I'll go to the board and we can discuss continuing this application. To the next meeting, um, would you like to have discussion? On that or would somebody like to make a motion and then we can discuss what's needed?
So, uh, this is Jeremy Katz, Mr. Mercer. Can I say a couple of things?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, just look, I've, I've been, you know, reading through this and, and listening to, to all sides and I, I think that, um. Part of, uh, what the applicants, you know, have been asking is for, uh. Some amount of, of guidance of, of what's expected of them and what they have to prove and, um. You know, in looking at this and, and trying to construe what's, what's being asked, I. I know I mentioned this before, but I feel very strongly that really what this is, is, is a request to convert from. Uh, a previously approved non-conforming use to another non-conforming use, which is, is covered by, I think, 702.1. Um, and there are standards that are, uh, that go along with that. Um, and those standards are identifiable and I think Mr. Corwin could probably give those standards to the applicants to specifically speak to. Uh, for the, uh, for the next meeting and to potentially any of butters to respond to as well. Uh, but because the, the nature of the special exception that's being asked, uh. In my opinion, it's not a standard special exception. It's actually a, a very specific type. Uh, you know, I'd, I'd, I'd like to suggest to see if we could get some, some agreement that in reality, that's what we're looking at here. Uh, so that we could provide some solid guidance to these applicants of, of what they would need to explain to us.
Thank you, Mr. Katz. Um, does anybody else on the board want to respond to what Mr. Katz is suggesting?
I think it's Al Patterson.
Go ahead.
In the past, and, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Katz, but it sounds like you recommend, I mean. You use the term of provide them guidance. I don't know that, that we should be as a board doing that. I think that they're in a position where they don't understand what's being asked of them. In regards to the, uh, logistics of it or the, or, or the actual understanding of the zoning law and regulations. Then they need to, to seek guidance from somebody other than the board. I don't know that we should be doing that. I mean, if we want to come to a conclusion as a board, what we are asking for them to do. I think it's upon them to, to see how they're going to move forward from there.
So, well, yeah, I'd, I'd be glad to answer that. I mean, when, when somebody applies for a special exception or variance. Uh, we hand them the criteria of the application that says, here are the criteria. And if we just simply ask Mr. Corwin to print up a copy of section 702.1 and hand those criteria. Uh, along with, uh, the standard fill-in-the-form of, of, of what, uh, the criteria are that we're going to be voting on. Uh, that's not guiding in a butter or guiding the applicant one way or the other. It's simply saying. These are the criteria that we look at and we're going to be considering it as a conversion from one non-conforming use to another. Because again, I'm going to say, in my opinion, the criteria are very different. You know, like if we look at this under 702.1 very specifically, you know, they're going to have to show. That a contractor yard without these restrictions is, uh, less non-conforming. Than the contractor yard with the restrictions that had the prior special exception.
So, so, um, Mr. Corwin. We could ask, so we could continue this and ask the applicants to revise their application. You'd have to renotice it. And they'd have to pay for it to be renoticed, but revise their application to conform to what Mr. Katz is suggesting, which I think I agree. Probably makes more sense.
Um, yes, this is Tim. If I could just reply quickly. I, I, I do think that, that makes sense as well. Although I'll, I'll, I'll point out again that, um, that it's, it's. It's, it's been our long, it's been the longstanding opinion of the city's legal counsel that. To the extent the board finds that there is another section that is, is. That is, that applies to a particular application. Um, the board can go ahead and grant relief, uh, or approval pursuant to that section. Although it didn't appear in the hearing notice, as long as the type of request is not, is not different. And so in this case, um, you know, the, the request was for a, a, an amendment to an existing special exception approval. Um, but, but I think it's our opinion and, and our legal counsel's opinion that to the extent the board finds that. 702.1 is the special exception that, uh, applies here, then, um, then in fact, the, the board does not need. Or the application does not need to be renoticed. So I, I'll just. I'll repeat that and, but, but we can do whatever you, you would like us to do.
Okay, Mr. Katz, would you like to make a motion?
Uh, yeah, sorry. I was on the, uh, I'm on mute. So the, uh, uh, yeah, I'd like to, uh, make a motion that. Uh, one, that we continue this hearing until, what is it, October 5th? Is that right?
Yes, correct.
That we continue this hearing until October 5th and that, uh, at the October 5th hearing, we will take additional testimony. Uh, to the extent there is some from the applicants as well as any interested butters. Uh, and view this application as being made and considered under section 702.1. Of the ordinance as a, uh, request for special exception to convert from one lawful non-conforming use to another lawful non-conforming use.
Okay, do we have a second?
This is Dan Nash. I'll second it.
Any discussion?
One of the things that would be helpful on this, it's been some time, but we, we don't have a site plan or a sketch or did I miss it? I think it'd be helpful to have a sketch of what they intend to do, what the uses are, how they're separated. Where the landscaping is going to go around the contractor's yard. What the fence, outside the fence, those kinds of things would be helpful.
Mr. Katz, uh, would you be amenable to amending your motion to include that as a request?
Uh, absolutely. That's why I'd be.
And, um. Mr. Nash, since it's your suggestion, you seconded it. I assume it's agreeable to you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Just, just a question from me. So, so this is Al Patterson. Sorry. I guess I, I can kind of understand what we're doing, but I guess. My concern is that once again, we have a butters who are, um, not happy and have been kind of. If you will, put out by this and now we're prolonging it further. And whether this is the right avenue or, or not, that, that's subject for discussion. Um, and, and opinion, but, um. I just, you know, it, it just seems like at some point for the sake of, uh. You know, getting things done in a timely manner. I just, I, I, I just see us, we keep pushing things out and I don't, I guess I. It bothers me a little bit.
So, I'm not sure I agree that we're pushing this out. We have to continue. This application to the next meeting and that is what we're doing with specific requests for testimony. Um, for testimony and information to the next meeting, which we have to. Which we have to do. We're not extending it beyond October 5th. Is there any further, um, discussion or we'll take a vote? Okay, uh, Mr. Katz, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
I vote yes.
Mr. Patterson?
I vote yes.
And I vote yes. So it's unanimous. It's continued to the next hearing. And Mr. Corwin, I assume you'll reach out to the applicants?
Yes.
Based on that? Okay.
Madam Chair, just.
Yes, sir.
Make two points. One, uh, looks like zig speed is on, but we've already continued that. We could let that applicant know that. Yes, we continue the other.
Yes.
As well. So we don't go beyond 10. We're not going to get much done on that tonight.
So can you, is somebody willing to make a motion to continue for another? Do we want to continue the meeting? Does anybody want to make a motion to continue the meeting?
I, I would make, it's Al Patterson. I would make a motion that we continue the meeting. Um, for, at least for a purpose, for the purpose of discussing this next application with the same. Um, um, applicants and specifically because we have. People on the line that I'm sure that might want to add or something to it.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it, Jeremy Katz.
Thank you. Uh, all those in favor, Mr. Patterson?
Yes, I vote yes.
Mr. McDonough?
I vote yes.
Mr. Newlove?
I vote yes.
Mr. Nash?
I vote no.
Mr. Katz?
Uh, I vote yes.
And I'll reluctantly vote yes for the same, for all the right reasons. Okay, uh, we're going to continue the hearing and, um, let me back up a second. I understand that Alice D'Anzby is on the line.
Hi, yes. I'm so sorry to, um, waste the board's time and miss my spot and I apologize to my butter who is also on the line.
Okay, so we, um, we understand, especially in this time of strange virtual meetings, so we just continued your application to October 5th. And would expect to hear your application then. Is that okay?
Okay.
Okay.
That is certainly, I assume the meeting needs to end right now. So really, whatever. Uh, best for the board and I'm really sorry that I missed my spot.
So, so it would be continued anyway. The, um, you, you would have heard at the beginning, Tim, read the, um. Uh, New Hampshire RSA right to no requirements and the way we're operating under COVID since we're in virtual meetings. No, nothing is heard and decided on the same night to allow the public, um, additional time or people additional time to provide information in these virtual meetings. So it would have been continued no matter what. Um, we just didn't hear your testimony tonight, but, but we will hear it on October 5th.
Okay, thank you so much for.
Thank you. Thank you for calling in and letting us know.
Yeah, thank you.
We appreciate it. Okay. Okay, I'm going to move on to the last one here. Uh, this is in the matter of Cody Swenson and Samantha Medina, 397 Dartmouth College Highway, tax map 111, lot 9, zoned RL2. The applicants request a variance from sections 313.2 and 702.5D of the City of Lebanon zoning ordinance to allow the expansion of a non-conforming produce stand use. In the alternative, the applicants request a special exception pursuant to section 313.2 to expand an existing produce stand. For the purposes of voting on this one, I will appoint Mr. Newlove for hearing this one tonight. Um, and, uh, Mr. Corwin. Do you have any, um, opening clarification or statements for this one?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Mercer. The, um. The issue at, the issue before the board is. Is that there is a new, there are. There's at least one or, or more new greenhouses, uh, that are located, uh, to the rear of the, uh, the farm stand use. Uh, those greenhouses are, um, are, are. Uh, not permitted by right. Rather, they require, um, a, a variance, uh, from sections 313.2 and 702.5D. Uh, to allow the expansion of a non-conforming, uh, you know, retail use or produce stand use into, uh, new buildings. Um, we, we had, the, the applicant had, um, in the alternative, the applicant could have, um, explained that, um. The, uh, the existing retail use is, uh, a, a produce stand in the way that that, the, in the way that that, um. Term is defined, uh, in appendix A of the zoning ordinance, uh, and, and could have, uh, applied for a special exception to expand that produce stand. Um, uh, but, and, and it's not, it's not really clear what, what in fact is being, uh, asked by the applicant. Um, I think, I think in fact that, that is the request, but we did not receive, uh, any, um. Uh, any materials relating to the, uh, special exception criteria.
Okay, thank you. Um. Mr. Swenson and Ms. Medina. Could you please, uh, describe what you're asking for in this application?
Um, yeah, I, I guess I'm going to start off by saying, I guess I'm a little confused. Um. When we had bought in the property, Don had several greenhouses on the property. Um, I guess I wasn't to the understanding that if I disassembled a greenhouse he had there. And moved it somewhere else, um, that I needed any sort of special permission for it. Um, as it goes with my business from my understanding also. Um, in Don putting up any of those greenhouses, he never went in front of the board. So I guess. In another fashion, I was under the impression I didn't need permission to put up greenhouses or to move them or anything of the sort. Um, so if I could just be again, same fashion, um, explain to. What I can and can't have at my, because it is grandfathered in, correct, as a commercial farm stand slash retail store. I guess there needs to be more clarification. I think a lot of people can agree on that. Um, on what it means to be grandfathered in there as a commercial farm stand slash retail store. And I guess at times I just don't understand, um, if I'm falling under that category or if I'm falling under the rural residential category. Um, I don't think there's really been a fine line of which way anything really goes. And I think that's where me and my neighbors included get a lot of our confusion and frustration from. Um, as Linda had mentioned, when she was on here, me and her had sat down and talked with her husband. Um, and I got to understand a lot of where her frustration and everything comes from. Um, and I think for both of us, it would be a huge help if there was just a bit more. Um, of a fine line of what is allowed and what isn't. And if it's grandfathered in as this thing or if I'm following rural residential zoning ordinance. Um, obviously I would like to keep my greenhouses. Um, I have taken down more than just the one I have put back up and I would hope to put that one back up as well. Um, so I guess I'm just asking where we go from here.
Um, Ms. Mercer, this is Tim again. Can I just restate some of what I said? I, I didn't, I didn't have that very clear. I apologize. Um, the, the, the issue with the produce stand started. With some complaints, uh, regarding the scope of the activities that were, um, that were being undertaken. At the produce stand location. Um, for example, there was a, a pig roast. Um, what, what, what needs to be understood is that. The applicant is allowed to utilize this business, whatever it's called, whatever we call it. Clearly it's some type of retail use. But they're only permitted to utilize it in the same way that it was always utilized. Um, unless. Unless, unless they are now using it in a way that's conforming to the zoning ordinance. Um, and so, you know, it, 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 the, the difficulty was that from staff's point of view, we had a, a series of, of, of complaints about how, how this use was um, how the applicants were utilizing the, the retail use in a manner that was inconsistent with the way that it had been historically used and therefore um, are, you know, in a way that's not permitted. But then we had the applicant telling us that, no, they, they're doing the same exact thing that's always been done. And so it, it becomes very difficult from an enforcement perspective because the, you know, it becomes a matter of, you know, he said, she said. Um, and so the one thing that was very clear uh, that we, that staff could observe, and that was very clearly um, I won't, you know, a violation was the uh, was the installation of the greenhouses. Um, regardless of where the greenhouses came from, um, the fact that they were, that they were installed in location, in a new location on, on the property in, 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 in um, in association with the, the produce stand retail use requires some form of, of zoning board approval. And so what the staff memo says is um, you know, if the applicant is saying that their use is a produce stand, then that produce stand, uh, and that's a defined term in the zoning ordinance. If there's, if they're saying that they meet that, then accepting that as true, the greenhouse is required a special exception because produce stand is a special, is a use allowed by special exception in the RL2. And so any other, any new expansion of that or any new buildings associated with that, with that produce stand special exception use would have likewise required a special exception. So that's assuming we're taking, and it's, it's unclear what, what the, at, what the, what the, what the applicants are saying and what, and, and what they're asserting, but if we say that they're a produce stand, if they say that they're a produce stand is the way, in, in the way that that term is defined, these greenhouses still need a special exception from the zoning board. Um, uh, and so, you know, or, or if they don't meet the, the, if they don't meet the definition of produce stand, um, then um, then a variance is required to uh, to expand a, 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 a non-conforming use. You know, and even then, it's, it's, you're, you're, the board has to accept, the board has to accept that um, the ex, the expansion of the, of, of the, of the, of the non-conforming use, or excuse me, the, the, the non-conforming use to be expanded is the same, you know, as it, as it, as it's always been. So there are a lot of assumptions here built into what, into what the, the zoning board is, is being asked to do here. But there's no question that, that, that the greenhouses themselves, which is an easily observable um, uh, you know, feature of the site, uh, those need to be approved by the zoning board in some, in some way, in some manner.
Okay, thanks. Um, Ms. Medina, what do you use the greenhouses for?
Um, so this year was obviously the first year with them really up. Um, this year, I really only use them for storage. Um, as you can see, driving by, I have begun to, and I am more than halfway there, clearing the field behind the farm stand. Next year, I am going to be growing pumpkins and flowers. I did start in the greenhouses, a bunch of veggie starters that I have sold at my business in the beginning of the season. Um, so really, I'm using them for everything. As I said, I thought I could use them for, for a green, I mean, for a produce stand.
So you're primarily intending to use them for growing crop, growing?
Yeah, and I store in them as well once the stuff is in the ground and I have the open space, because I obviously don't have it all out front for display, so I do store in them as well.
You mean store flowers?
Yeah, that's, they know that.
Storing flowers. From where, where do the flowers come from?
Um, from a Pleasant View, a local resource of somebody that has started them for me.
Okay. So, Tim?
I got a question.
Okay.
So when Tim was saying about the greenhouses happen to have a, you know, to be registered or some form to show that they've been up, my question is, if the greenhouses were already up on the property, we have to get another form to take them down from one spot and just move them to the other, is what I'm, is what I'm, we're asking, because we, the greenhouses that were on the property, when we got there, there was a big 100 footer down below behind Jellison's, the shop, and then there was another 80 footer behind like,
The gate.
Behind the fenced in area, and then there was another greenhouse that he had permission to have put up, that he told us about, that we still have all the poles and all the stuff to set it up again. So what we did was we took the greenhouse that was dead, that was down below, and we broke it into sections, 20 foot sections, and we reset it back up. So it's not like it, we're using something that wasn't permitted, it's just in a different spot on, on the same property.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
This is Tim.
Go ahead.
The city has aerial photography dating back to 2012 and, and based on those photographs, there were no greenhouses on the property at that time. To the, so to the extent that they were installed sometime after 2012, it appears that they were installed without any proper approvals. Um, so the, the, the fact that there were greenhouses uh, on the property when the applicants purchased the property is sort of um, is arguably immaterial. The question is whether the, what was, well, there's two, there's two issues. One is, were, were they, were those greenhouses installed with the proper approvals? It appears that they weren't. But again, e- even that question is sort of immaterial, because the fact, if you, if you move the greenhouse, it's no different than if you, it doesn't, it doesn't matter that it was somewhere else on the property, even if, even assuming that it did have the proper approvals. The fact that it's, that it's removed and replaced and rebuilt in a new spot requires a building permit. And the building permit requires compliance with the zoning ordinance, and the zoning ordinance recognizes that as, as uh, you know, as, as an expansion of, of something, whether, whether it's a permitted produce stand use, or whether it's a, uh, an expansion of a, 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 a non-conforming, a non-conforming use.
Ms. Medina, how?
Finally, none of that, none, this is all, this is all, this will be more appropriate for administrative appeal, and that's not what's before the board tonight.
Ms. Medina, it sounds like you're growing some of the stuff on the property and other, other, uh, the rest of it is, is through commission or something?
Um, yes, the, uh, or wholesale, however you would call it.
Okay, so what percentage of your sales are for things that you grow on the property?
Right now, this year, I'd probably say 25, 75. I don't do, obviously, my hanging baskets and mums on my own. Um, next year, like I said, we're, I'm going to be growing pumpkins and all that out back, so that's going to be started on the greenhouse along with my cut flowers, so it will get much larger as next year comes.
Okay, so, Tim, agriculture is allowed in the RL districts, correct?
Yes, it is.
And if she's using the greenhouses to grow plants, isn't that allowed?
Um, the, the agr- agriculture includes um, if she's grow, if she's using greenhouses to grow plants, then, then yes, that would be, that would be permitted. And we had a discussion about that. Um, several, I had a discussion with the applicant about that several months ago. And uh, let me pull up the email correspondence to refresh my memory as to what was discussed. So I, let's see, um, so I wrote to uh, Ms. Medina on Wednesday, June 10th. I said, hi, Smith, it's my understanding that the greenhouses are used in whole or in part to cultivate slash store product that is brought in from off-site. Um, as such, the use of the greenhouses cannot be considered agriculture, which is a permitted use in the RL district. Uh, even if the greenhouses are used for one of the purposes identified in the definition of agriculture set forth in appendix A, it appears to me that the greenhouses are being used as part, as part of the non-conforming quote unquote produce stand use and cannot be considered their own independent agricultural use.
Well, so she, she just answered the question about how much stuff is grown on site, and she said it was about 25%, but next year she's planning to expand that. So she's clearly not meeting this right now. But the state RSA says that a farm roadside stand shall remain in agricultural operation and not be considered commercial, provided that at least 35% of the product sales and dollar volume, volume is attributable to products produced on the farm or farms of the stand owner. So she's not meeting that yet, but she's certainly, if she's using the greenhouses, I, 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 I think that we're wading into agricultural RSAs here and kind of mixing those with city zoning ordinance, which we may want to parse those out.
Sure.
Can I make a couple of comments, Ms. Mercer?
Yes, please.
So, hi, this is, this is Jeremy Katz. So, look, I think that uh, there are potentially two alternative ways to, to look at this. And one alternative is uh, what Ms. Mercer just brought up with permitted use number three agriculture uh, in the RL2 zone. Um, you know, and I'm, I'm not sure, I mean, if you bring seedlings in from someplace else and, and grow them in a greenhouse, it's, you know, it's, there's some amount of growing that has to be enough growing that uh, you know, that goes on. I'm not sure every farm, you know, takes anything from seed. Well, yeah, no, but like in terms of, you know, what's actually grown, but, you know, I, I sort of see this a slightly different way, because a, a, and again, I, I, I think the issue of putting up structures without building permits is a completely separate issue, that, that's a, that's a codes related issue. But if the greenhouses are only there to store and uh, develop product that is sold at the produce stand, uh, and the produce stand, and, and I'm not sure that I buy that the produce stand is a lawful non-conforming use, because uh, section 704 is very clear that if you have a pre-existing non-conforming use that's now allowed by special exception, you're deemed to have received that special exception. So uh, number six under special exception uses is a produce stand, uh, which very clearly they could be deemed to have. And then those greenhouses, if they are subordinate uh, an accessory to the produce stand, are accessory structures, and that's an accessory use. So, you know, like what, one way or the other, either these are accessory structures to the produce stand, which is allowed by, deemed to be allowed by special exception, or they may be agricultural use that's permitted by right. And I think either one can, can, can potentially cover most of, of what's here, apart again, from the fact that the building permits weren't received.
Thank you, Mr. Katz. Um, at this time, I'm going to open it up for the board to ask questions of the applicant. Mr. Katz, do you have any questions? For the applicant?
Sure, so, yeah, so, so my question to the applicant is uh, where, you're, when you're using the greenhouses to store, protect, or grow things, is everything that is stored, protected, or grown there intended to be sold at your produce stand?
Yes.
Okay, and if you didn't have the produce stand, and if the produce stand went out of business and was taken away, would there be any reason at all to have a greenhouse there with no produce stand?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Katz?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Nash, do you have questions?
I'm sorry, this is Tim, just, just, just something to think about. Um, I think the board, I think the board is going to have to make a finding uh, that, that the applicant's use satisfies the definition or meets the definition of produce standard in appendix A. So I, I would just ask the board to keep that definition in mind while, while the, while, while you move forward with the, with the discussion.
Is that here where it says sale of flowers, garden supplies, or agricultural produce designed to serve highway customers?
Yes.
So, so if that's the case, could I ask one more question?
Yes.
Ms. Medina, do you consider your produce stands to be in the business of selling flowers, garden supplies, or agricultural products to customers who come down the Route 4 highway?
Um, I mean, I guess I'm a little confused on that question. I mean, I,
Do, do, do you believe that you meet the definition of produce stand?
Yes, I mean, I also grow, so if, I mean, I guess, I know, that question's not really too in-depth for what I'm, I guess I'm thinking about. I mean, yes, in a sense of I do all of what is in definition of there, um, along with growing and other things for my produce stand, if that is clear to your question?
That is, thank you.
Okay.
No more questions, Ms. Mercer.
Thank you. Mr. Nash, do you have questions?
Again, uh, a sketch plan showing the, the greenhouses and we're finding out a little more narrative on what they're used for specifically, we can make a finding of fact, it would be helpful.
Ms., okay, thank you. We can uh, we can request that information, I think, in a motion. Continue. Mr. Patterson?
Yes, Ms. Medina, in the greenhouse, you just, you stated that it's 25, 75%. Can you explain to me in detail what the 75% is, what you're storing there? Because it sounds like with, yeah, just explain to me exactly what's stored in there.
Um, so flowers that I sell. So basically, I, I buy in obviously quite a bit at a time, so I'll get a full truckload. Not everything on my front display outside front of my farm stand. Um, not everything I buy can fit out there at once, so all my extra stock of flowers, you know, gets stored in there on the hanging baskets, you know, all get hung in the bars and stuff. I do on occasion, will keep my hay under there so it doesn't get wet, like right now I'm setting up for fall. Um, so my extra hay bales and everything are in there. Um, but other than that, that's it.
So you, you, so 25% is the flowers that you bring in, the other 75 is hay bales?
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying 25% is what I grow, 75% is what is brought in. That would be including, you know, 10 hay bales at a time as I'm setting up for fall or something, but it's just something that on occasion is stored in there. But overall, the majority of it is always flowers, and it's just overstocked that doesn't fit out front of my store on display at the moment.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Patterson?
No.
Mr. Newlove, do you have any questions?
I have no more questions for this evening.
For the entire evening. Uh, Mr. McDonough, do you have any questions?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak?
If, if the Wadleys and Childs would like to speak, you need to unmute your, unmute yourself.
Good evening again. This is Mary Lou Childs, M-A-R-I-L-O-U, last name Child, C-H-I-L-D-S. Um, I'd like clarification into seasonal produce stand and retail store. I keep hearing reference to retail. Retail to me is commercial. So what percentage is retail and what would constitute a commercial use? This is a rural RL2 zoning. Again, looking historically, this has been a seasonal farm stand. Seasonal farm stand selling produce. We have moved into selling mulch and firewood and trees and um, antiques and various gifts within the, the physical farm stand uh, facility. And I'm sure Sammy would appreciate as well as we would, what constitutes retail versus seasonal farm stand? Again, looking at signage next to the road. We have signs blown over every day. We have garbage blown across the street every day. I just want to see it cleaned up. I want to see a neat premise representing a farm stand and a landscaping person. I don't want to come down my driveway and pick up empty pots at the foot of the driveway. Um, again, we're looking at a heated unit. Was this intended to be a seasonal farm? Was this intended to be a seasonal farm stand? There is a wood stove in there with various Facebook, social media posts saying, please make sure the door is closed, because I may have the wood stove burning. I know that's not part of this, this is greenhouses, but again, these are the things that I come down my driveway and see and note and wonder. I don't want to see, and I will flat-out tell you this, I don't want to see the lot across from my house become a commercial use. I don't want McDonald's over there. So the more and more we lean toward seasonal produce versus retail store versus commercial use, and that's okay, I've been grandfathered in, where does this stand? I, please answer, where does this stand? Where are the delineations between retail store and seasonal farm stand? Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's what we're trying to figure out here. Is there anyone else who would like to speak from the public? Hearing none? Okay, so, is there anyone from the board who would like to make a motion to continue this hearing? We've heard, um, testimony from the applicants, we've heard testimony with additional questions from the abutters, so I think that a motion to continue should also include the additional information that we're seeking, uh, pertaining to the, some of the questions we have and the questions that the abutters have.
This is Dan Nash, I'll make a motion that we continue this to five October.
Okay. Would you like to add anything to that?
I'd like to see the site plan, and about more of a narrative on what's going on in the greenhouses, something.
How about a list of, a list of all the retail products that are sold there? Would that suffice?
Could we, this is Al Patterson, can I suggest something?
Sure.
What, would a scope of operation from their perspective help? I mean, it just seems like they're, in, in both testimonies, they're kind of vague as to, you know, they've, they've got plans to do things, but they, they're not really explaining what it is they intend to do, and I think that's important, so that we can, tailor our decision based on those, or not necessarily tailor them, but at least take that into consideration.
Sorry, this is Tim, I, I, if you don't mind, I, I completely agree. I mean, the, as, as I mentioned, the board is going to make, have to make a finding of fact, um, that, that this, uh, the use meets the definition of produce stand, and, um, and it seems, between the abutters' testimony and the ambiguity in what the applicant is presenting, I think, um, having the applicant's detail in writing for the record, what it is that they are, what, what it is that they are doing, will help establish, um, will help establish, uh, whether or not they are in fact a produce stand, uh, and, uh, and more generally, um, at some point, wha, what it is that they can and cannot do on, at the property. And so I, I think it is very advisable to ask the applicant for a written scope of, uh, scope of, of, of their business activities.
Okay, so we're requesting a site plan and a scope of business activities. Anything else from the board before we, before I ask for a second? I'm just, I kind of want to hone in on the motion here.
I would say scope of activities and operations, or slash operations, so that we cover all aspects.
I would like to see a list of everything that's being sold as retail goods, year-round. I'd like to add that.
I, this is Dave New, I totally agree with that. I mean, if I'm hearing they're selling mulch, and there's some wood, um, yeah, we need to see a list.
Yep, otherwise, yep, I agree.
Otherwise, we, we go with what the neighbors are telling us.
Correct.
So, well, look, uh, I, I think, this is, this is Jeremy Katz, I, I think some of this might be somewhat, uh, telegraphing, you know, some, some thoughts or readings I, any of us might have, but, you know, I think that we could invite both the abutters as well as the applicant to present the information that they believe is, is relevant. I mean, I, I just, uh, you know, in looking at it, I'm, I'm not sure, I mean, I'll, I'll just put it out, I'm not offended by mulch, it says garden supplies, mulch could be a garden supply, you know, wood could be an agricultural produce, you know, I'm, I'm not, um, uh, I, I could understand if, if the discussion is antiques and, and, and unregistered vehicles, and, and things that are noxious and offensive in that way, but, you know, to hand out what, what breed of pumpkin you might be putting out is, is, seems, seems a little far. It's, it's, you know, the produce stand definition that's in front of me right now cannot possibly identify everything that might or might not be included in produce.
I think it can certainly identify what their intentions are and, and what their scope and intent of operation there is.
Yeah, and, yeah. And I, I want to see the list too, because, Mr. Katz, you make some good points, um, and I think some of those things by state definition certainly still fit this, this, fit the city's vague description of produce stand and what's allowed for agriculture, but other things don't, the mention of the antiques, um, that doesn't. And then what percentage is really grown on-site or grown on their property versus, uh, what they're selling, reselling for others? It, it doesn't, uh, fall under the agricultural state RSAs if it's, uh, if, if they're not selling at least thirty-five percent of things that they produce themselves. So I think we want to see that, we want to understand the business scope, operations, activities, um, and have that more clearly defined for us. I, I would like to see that for discussion for the next meeting.
Can I ask a question, Ms. Mercer?
Yes.
This is Dave Newlove. Um, if we do not receive this information, we will still, are we still going to go ahead and make a decision?
We will, we will be making a decision based on the testimony we heard at that point, yes.
Okay, thank you, I just want to be clear.
I mean, unless, well, I, I don't have a crystal ball, but I, as far as I know, that's what the intent of the next meeting would be, and the chair will probably be back, I'm sure there could be other reasons that things would change, but I'm not intending that the meeting would be continued further beyond that, at least right now.
Thank you. I agree.
Okay, uh, Mr. Nash, are you okay with those requirements added to your motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I second it, this is Dave Newlove.
Okay, uh, roll call, vote. Mr. Patterson, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Mr. Newlove?
I vote yes.
Mr. Nash?
I vote yes.
Mr. Katz?
Vote yes.
And I vote yes, it's unanimous. Continue to the next meeting, and there's a list of information that we're requesting. Okay, um, those are all the hearings for tonight, are there any staff comments?
No, I did send out a, um, a Teams invite, uh, it, it came from the, uh, planning email address for the October fifth, uh, five-thirty meeting with legal counsel.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Dan Nash.
Dan Nash has moved that we adjourn, do we have a second?
All seconds, Al Patterson.
I heard a couple seconds. Uh, is anyone opposed? Speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay, we're adjourned.
Thanks, everyone, good night.
Thank you.
Good night.